All right, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to the South Burlington School Board meeting. Do we have any comments from the public for items that are not on the agenda tonight? All right. Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
We do. You want to remove number 13?
Yeah, we're going to remove number 13.
Maybe you don't want to remove the person in 13, but maybe. But if we're going to take it off the agenda.
We're going to push number 13 to our next meeting.
Yes.
Yes.
And you want to add an executive session for the purposes of discussing a legal matter specific to real estate. Is that correct?
Uh, specific to labor negotiations.
Okay, yeah. Perfect.
All right. Any other amendments? Very good. Do we have any announcements?
I don't have any formal announcements for you folks. We've got a lot going on. Just very quickly, those of you who've traveled in and around or are looking around the school, you know there's a lot going on here in this school with cafeteria having a re-tiling, the walkway into the lobby you saw, the turf field you've seen that looks different, the track looks different. The high school has got all kinds of things going on, the elevator project. I think the board heard previously that we had a little bit of a scare on the elevator project, detecting a high power line that was going through where we were going to be making that expansion. That's been worked out. We were concerned about falling very behind. We're now about a day within being on schedule. Obviously, there's a lot of things still contingent, but we're moving along. The other thing, you know, we have all kinds of stuff going on with students, you know, I think are significant. I'll ask Susie maybe to respond. Is Susie in?
Oh, yeah. Maybe about on the Muslim girls that we hit the AP press. But before I do that, I also want to just recognize, you know, we have a lot of things going on in our country right now, specific to, you know, legal law enforcement, and we think about Dallas and all of the things going on. And I just wanted to just take pause for a second to recognize that, you know, we in this city are pretty fortunate that we are where we are and we have a lot of supportive people. But that said, we also know that we have many community members, many extended family people, and folks in those places that are having a hard time. So I just wanted to give pause to that. But with the folks, and it just hit, actually, I wanted to forward to the board on the Muslim girls' poetry thing. So could you just take a second and just tell them about that?
Yes, of course. The four of our, three of our South Burlington High School students, I'm so sorry, two of our South Burlington High School students and two Burlington High School students have joined together. They're good friends, and they have formed a group called Muslim Girls Making Change. And you've probably seen them all over the headlines. It's quite inspirational. They're in Washington DC this week as part of the nationwide poetry competition. And they just made the AP wires today, a story about them. So David has the link and we.
Yeah, we'll send it to you. We discussed it this afternoon, but we'll send it out. But also nice to reckon, so many of our students, and again, I hate just to highlight those, we have many of our students off doing extended learning experience all over the place. So thanks, Susie, for the quick highlight.
All set. And then next is city and school collaboration. I don't have any updates under that category. Do you, David?
No. We have another meeting coming up next, I want to say next Friday.
Yeah.
But nothing beyond our last report.
And that moves us to the master planning and visioning update. I think we have a presentation we're going to start with tonight. I'm not sure if Stephanie wants to frame how you want this to go. Do you want to do the presentation and then take questions at the end? Or do you want to?
That'd be ideal.
That'd be ideal? Okay. Great.
Come on up.
Stand over your shoulder.
No, we'll move. It's common practice in our spot. Yeah.
You just got the microphone set up, so.
Okay.
And if you can't hear me, just let me know. I tend to be loud, though. So, hi, I'm Stephanie Hanley with Whiten Burke, as many of you have seen me before, and the board all knows that we're familiar with this project. We've been working on this project since the fall of 2015. So I am going to ask Susie to be forwarding my slides here. But I should take about 15 minutes here to go through this work, and then I think we can open it up to question and answer. But I think if to get through it all, just to kind of understand, and I'm going to try to walk you through it as much as I can, that would be great. And, you know, we've been kind of busy at work. You can go ahead to the next slide. I'll start with what we're going to talk about is the review of where we've been, what we've been up to, where this started. Go back through the scenarios to refresh everyone's memory, get us all thinking in the same vocabulary, if nothing else, because there's a lot of jargon and a lot of different terms we've been using and trying to get everyone speaking the same language. Talk a little bit about process. And then I'm going to go into a little more depth on my model that is, we've been toiling with for a long time, and there's been a lot of questions from the community about what that looks like, what's been included, what's been excluded, how does it work? And I can explain that and talk about sensitivities and limitations around modeling in general, because that's what my expertise is in. And I understand that there's a lot of kind of, I want to demystify as much of it as I can. And then we'll talk about the actual outputs and the findings that are at the disposal of the board to be doing what they want in terms of making decisions. So I'm the numbers person, and then I kind of defer all other decision-making, which is a nice new role for me. Usually, I have to play the other role, too. So I'll go to the next slide. We were hired and contracted in the fall, and we worked closely with staff, administration, and the board to develop all of the, gather the data, bring all the pieces together, understand what the questions and concerns were, and do some more research, and then put this model together. We met on March 22nd with the public and debuted the different findings, the different scenarios. And then there was a lot of additional Q and A, a lot of questions that came out from the community, from the board, and it resulted in more data scrubbing, more analysis, a lot more. There was additional information that we were still waiting on as it came in. And so we were able to put all that back together and churn out some more additional results. The numbers that we're working with are still very similar to what was shown in the spring, but a little more fine-tuned. And then tonight, I'm hoping to add some clarity to the areas that seemed confusing when we kind of unloaded all of this on you in March. So I'm going to refresh on all the scenarios. You might remember, the board is very familiar with the graphic that has the five scenarios and the different schools configurations within that. We started with scenario one, which is, and these were all developed in conjunction as a team, but the scenario one was just what could you do? What could be accomplished if you just did stewardship at all five schools? You have the three elementary, middle school, and high school. If you do only stewardship for 20 years, we picked a 20-year window for this model, how much would that cost to do just stewardship? And that's including a lot of the deferred maintenance that had happened that's come up over the years that hasn't been able to be covered by the general operating budget. Scenario two adds a layer to that, which says if we keep all five schools open and we do the stewardship that's needed, but we add upgrades to all five schools, how much would that cost? The next is scenario three, which would be if we were to close Chamberlain, keep Orchard and Marcot existing as the elementary schools move all students into those two schools, make accommodations at those schools to fit the students, plus doing the upgrades at the elementarys, the middle school, the high school, and stewardship. The fifth grade would move up to Tuttle, to the middle school, and so that becomes five to eight. In scenario four, we did scenario four one way, and then we looked at it with an alternate at one point. But basically, the scenario four would close Chamberlain and Marcot and would leave Orchard and a new school to house all elementary students. Now Orchard and, we originally modeled it, but that Orchard would house the pre-K, or the kindergarten to second graders, and the new school would house the third graders to fifth graders. But then we looked at it an alternate way and said, what if both of those schools were both kindergarten to fourth grade? And in the first scenario, the fifth graders would be in that elementary school, but in the alternate, the fifth grade would move to the middle school. So there were some adjustments, but as we said in the last meeting, the scenario four came in at a cost and option, the alternate to the option with this two pre-K through fourth grade schools actually was a lower amount. So we'll get into a little bit more of that with the numbers in a moment. But there was an alternate looked at. In scenario five, it was to close all three elementary, build a brand-new facility for kindergarten through fourth grade, move the fifth graders up to middle school, and again, do the upgrades, though, at middle school and high school. That's consistent with all of these. So here's the graphic that we had provided, so you can kind of get a sense of what's closed, what's remaining, what's existing. I gotta check my notes. Hold on. So, yeah. So I think that pretty well lays it out, but we'll get into the numbers in a moment. Updates since March. So since we were doing, last time we appeared before the public, we were, since then, we've been working on clarifications of what didn't make sense, what were the general confusions about the work we had done from the community. And one thing that became clear was that previously, we were talking about including pre-K in a lot of these schools. The pre-K costs have not been included in the general numbers, but that rather the pre-K, it's intended that preschool would be considered in this picture. It's just that that's an evolving topic of where they're going to be. So those costs are not included across the board. So when you see the numbers comparatively from scenario to scenario, it's apples to apples. And any incremental cost to accommodate pre-K is actually on an order of magnitude not very significant when you're looking at the price tags that we have of the full scenario costs. The other clarification that's important to note, and this came out in a couple of community conversations and came back to us, which was, I think, kind of residual from the task force work that was done last year, is this concept of 21st century learning. In the upgrades that we had been modeling in those scenarios that you saw, we had been modeling upgrades to some schools. The costs that we had been given were for upgrades to some schools, and then the new schools would all be done at that 21st century learning level. Not all schools would be brought up to that 21st century level. That was, they would be upgraded with additional changes, but not necessarily, and we can go to the next slide, but not up to that 21st century level. So when we're talking about the schools being upgraded in scenarios two, three, and in Orchard in number four, we're talking about renovations of the existing configurations, as opposed to 21st century learning, which talks about drastic changes that would need to be made to accommodate the connectivity and the flexibility of spaces. And when you're building from scratch, when you build a new school, you can do that. And that's why the numbers for the new schools were right off the bat going to be 21st century. But instead of doing 21st century at all the schools, there was another cost estimate for just doing upgrades. And some of those upgrades, just to give you a sense of what that is, I have a list here, and I'm not an architect, and we got these from the architect. But the upgrades at the elementary schools would be things like modifying spaces that improve functionality, adding shelving, adding sinks, subdividing classrooms, improving special education spaces. Those would be the upgrades at the elementary schools. The upgrades at the middle school and the high school are, again, reconfigurations, renovations of existing spaces, but for instance, in the middle school, physical education space and full school assembly space and support spaces, renovations to current district offices for conversion back to classroom space, building code upgrades and upgrades to bring these, both the middle school and the high school, into compliance with NEASC standards. In the high school, again, physical education and support space, library space, media center, and then focused classroom renovations and interventions to support collaborative learning opportunities. I'm sorry, I'm reading this off a paper, but I'm not an educational specialist or an architect, and this is the background behind the numbers that we got, that we put into our model. So we'll get into a little bit more on 21st century when we see the numbers toward the end of the slides. So I'll circle back, but I wanted to make that one point. And then there were other updates we made since March. There was two pieces of new information that came about. We got the Oak Creek appraisal, which is the site that a new elementary school would need to be built on. The appraisal was done by the city, and we had that. We had a placeholder for what we thought the value might be. We updated that when we got the appraisal from the city. And then we also learned that the legislature passed the, there was a, we had had a component in our model to allow for repaying the state. There's a debt payback window that you would have to pay back the state if you sold a property. So we had had a placeholder in there for that, or we had a figure in there for paying back the state. That has gone away until 2021, I believe. And so if any property in our model has been modeled to be sold before that, we no longer have to repay the state. So that actually is cost savings overall to the general figure. So some of the figures are different because of these changes of new information. So then we got a lot of questions about the model, and I'm not surprised. And it's 36 tabs on a spreadsheet that I created. But it's, so it's got a lot of different components, but I tried to break it down into four basic categories, which is things we had to put into the model in order to make, to figure out and create an apples-to-apples comparison among all five scenarios. Costs, starting with costs. We had, we got the costs, like I've talked about, from the architects and from the work that was done during the task force. That costs, those costs were for new construction, for the upgrades, and accommodating students at the schools when one was closed. The cost for stewardship and the costs, and then timing of the costs. So we had to make, we had to put in some variables of what would be the timing of each of those outlays of cash, really, for how do you, when do you need to pay that to make the facilities open in time? And that also teed in with the real estate estimates. So as we said at the last meeting, too, we had to do some broker's opinion of value for the existing sites if they were being proposed to be sold. So in the scenarios where there would be a facility sold, we had to put some value in there of what they'd be worth on the market, what we think would be reasonable to expect from the market. Also added the Oak Creek appraisal, and again, we had to factor in all the timing of when those sales would happen. Savings was another line item in there, which is what operational savings would be realized in the event of closing a school, various costs that go into that when you do consolidate. And then making, putting in some inputs of the financing. So the bond terms, the bond structures, the amounts of those bonds, and then other financing sources as we developed them. And I'm going to make a key clarification here, which is we distinguish these inputs in two categories. One, factors, and the other, variables. And these are definitions we created to say that the factors are things that are substantiated, costs or values that have some sort of methodology behind them. The cost of building a new school has paperwork behind it, has a description of how they got to that number. So it's an understandable substantiated number, even if it is an estimate. The variables, on the other hand, are more judgment calls. And they had to be, you had to make assumptions to do those judgment calls. For instance, inflation. We know that the cost we have today to build a new school in five years is going to be a different cost. We don't know by how much, but we can make a reasonable assumption. We've tried to err conservatively on what those assumptions are. Inflation rate, growth of the grand list. Those types of projections are variables, because we don't know. We did our best judgment call and vetted it as many times as we could. So those are kind of the, that's the span and the stretch of all the model inputs. We, oh, other direction. That's okay. Still go the other directions. I think it keeps going back. That's okay. So there are things that we were asked afterwards, well, did you consider? Did you consider? Did you consider? And so we decided to be, we've come out and say, what we did not include in the model, what were the exclusions? Things like transportation costs or environmental impacts. Those are, those were beyond this phase of the work. That's a level of detail and a level of complexity and a cost that the district did not want to incur yet without taking it down the path a little bit further with knowing which scenario to pursue. Enrollment sensitivities. The enrollment numbers match with the, had been worked on between the enrollment numbers and the capacity level of each school and what it would cost by square foot to be able to accommodate those. The demographics, you know, were given to us. So we personally did not do, you know, any kind of enrollment sensitivity assessment within this. The option four B, I mentioned before, the kind of alternate where you had two pre-K, or kindergarten through fourth grade schools instead of kindergarten to second and third to fifth. We didn't evaluate that. It was a late addition. And it was also realized that the number, we did quickly do a calculation, but we didn't go in-depth on that feasibility. But the quick calculation showed that it was less than the first option four, or scenario four. So to be conservative, we stuck with the original option four. And then option six came out in the last few months, and I didn't actually know what that was, because we hadn't developed an option six. But apparently, there was a suggestion or a thought about doing an additional school with, near JC Park. The district does not own any property near JC Park. It was also a late addition, so that was not part of our scope, just in case you were wondering. And then the question of what if you repurposed the schools instead of selling the properties? What I will say is that the highest and best use was factored into the broker's opinion of value when we did this analysis. We also made the assumption that the district would not hold on to a property that they're not using for a school. So it would be transferred, sold, and when it's, we needed to pick a value that would be assigned to that. So whether it gets repurposed by a private user, by another public user, is outside of the realm of the implications of the numbers. And then impact on neighborhood values. That was another question. We did not assess that. That was outside the scope of this analysis. I'm sure it could be done, but it would take additional steps and a lot more research and data collection and a lot more work with the local tax assessor, so. Before we get into the outputs, I wanted to, this is a bit of a disclaimer, in a way, about modeling. And this one is a really complex model, because what you're talking about is five different scenarios, all different timing, because of logistics. So if you close one school, you can't close it before you've built a new one, or you have to make sure there's ongoing construction, and there's longer waiting times while you're constructing a school, while you still have students in it. So there's a lot of complexities to the timing. There's a lot of complexities to the variability and the potential for, you know, the market to respond to any property sales, et cetera. So in creating apples-to-apples comparisons, so that the board and the public could see what would be the implications of each scenario, we tried to keep as many factors similar as we could. But naturally, in a model, there will be many that differentiate, especially when you're talking about such very different scenarios. Now, the metrics of this are also really complicated and depend and a little bit hard to communicate, partially, because if you think about it simplistically, it'd be easy to say, what does that car cost? Tell me what car in scenario three, what does that car cost? But really, what we're asking is how much does that, how much is that, if I buy this car for $5,000 now and borrow $20,000, and then I pay 3% for seven years, what am I ultimately paying for it? And comparing that to an outright sale today. You know, thinking about those two different types of approaches to the cost here, it's very complicated, and to try to get a metric that keeps the scale relevant and is easy to look at side by side was really important. So we really, we went really deep and really carefully through this. My firm did, as well as vetting it with board members to make sure it's understandable. So we picked two metrics, and I hope they make sense. That's the way I'm trying to explain it. But, you know, in terms of limitations of modeling, there are just judgment calls that are made along the way, and there is a certain level of order of magnitude with this analysis because of the level of estimating and the level of speculation when you're looking at a 20-year time period with a lot of different possible influences. So what I'm going to show you is a lot of graphs and a lot of charts with a lot of numbers, and I'm hoping that they'll be clear enough that there's a good discussion, a good understanding of all of it. The two, or the three metrics we picked were, or the three, two metrics, costs and tax impacts. Those are the two. And we showed these in March as well. We've changed partially how you look at costs, because we were looking at it from a debt service perspective. We're now looking at it from a capital perspective. But I think it, because it's a little more easier to understand and puts things in a bigger perspective and shows the more true differentiation between the five scenarios. And then tax impacts, which is more granular and shows it a very specific example of how it would impact an individual taxpayer, which the public, or the board was very keen on doing. So we've broken this out in three different ways. What if you don't do, what is the cost of doing the elementary reconfiguration only? If you're not counting the high school and the middle school upgrades? Then the question of, okay, what if you do the middle school and high school upgrades? What's the full sum cost? And then looking at the 21st century costs. So in these scenarios, for instance, in scenario four, you have some schools that are upgraded, and then you have a new school that's at 21st century. Or in scenario five, you have a middle school and a high school that have been upgraded, but then a brand-new elementary school that's at 21st century. So we did a quick run of numbers to show, what if you did all the schools? All five in a few of the scenarios, or all three, or all four? At all 21st century learning level, what would that cost be? Basically, the Cadillac, what would that look like? And so we put those numbers up so that it's a point of reference and be able to keep context and scope. Okay. A lot of numbers. So we've broken this out by investment type in this first slide. These are if you only reconfigure the elementary schools. And again, scenario one is keeping all three open, doing stewardship only. Scenario two is doing upgrades, keeping all three open, stewardship and upgrades. Scenario three, you close Chamberlain, move all the kids to Orchard and Marcot, stewardship and upgrades. Scenario four, close Marcot and Chamberlain, convert Orchard and create a new school. And then scenario five is close all three and build one new school. Stewardship is, again, that deferred maintenance. So that's the line item for just doing stewardship among these different scenarios. You'll see that the number goes down, because when you do the upgrades and the accommodations, for instance, in scenario five, you now have a new facility, and you've done new schools, so you have less stewardship to do overall. So the number does go down in certain scenarios. Upgrades and accommodations are capital costs that are being made to existing facilities, whether, for instance, in scenario two, oops, oh my. Did not remember that. Where's my blackboard? Sorry.
No worries.
Upgrades and accommodations in scenario two, where you are leaving all three schools open, but you're upgrading them, is going to be $7 million. Whereas in scenario three, where you've now closed one school and you're upgrading two schools, you also have to add in the accommodation costs of assuming those new students in the facility. In the last scenario, in scenario five, for accommodations, it seems confusing when you're talking about just elementary schools, because now you're closing all three. Why do you have accommodations costs? Because the fifth grade would be moving up to the middle school. So that $2 million is what would it take to upgrade the middle school just to accommodate the fifth grade? And then a new school in scenarios four and five, those are the price tags that came for those facilities, as well as not just constructing them, but keeping them going throughout that 20-year window. What stewardship would be needed, or what capital reserve would then be put aside in order to upgrade those? Because we're talking about building a new school in, say, 2018, it'll be needing to be updated in the next, sometime within the next 20 years. Yeah. So we decided to then break that out into the taxes. What would the tax impact be of just reconfiguring the elementary schools? We have a condo example and a house example. And these are based on the values that are, the average values. Those are typically used with the budget every year. So I'm just going to use the house, because we did that in the spring, and we used a house example. So if a house of average value of $366,000 pays 76, around $7,600 today in taxes, these are what they would be paying by scenario in these years. So in 10 years, 2026, to do stewardship only. So, in 10 years, 2026, to, to do stewardship only, you would see taxes increase by roughly $1,800. Now, that includes background growth. And just for reference, of that 1,800 increase, actually 1,700 of it is just background growth, not relative to this actual investment that's been made. So, much of the increases you actually see are because of the background growth. There's a projected 2.43% increase of, of, um, budget for, for the, for the natural budget that would happen, whether you do any of these scenarios or not. And so, these numbers are representative of both natural growth plus what would be needed to pay down the debt service on each of these, each of these investments. In 2036, so going out the 20 years, you can see that actually from, in a, if you look at the difference between them, I think that's what's most interesting, is in scenario one, where you are only stewardship for all five schools versus getting a state-of-the-art school, a brand-new school for elementary and upgrading the middle school and upgrading the high school, you see a delta there of, oh, hey, my fast math, um, 90-ish, 90-ish dollars between the two, that, that that person would be paying. Now, part of the reason for that, and I should specify, with tax rates, it's important to remember that over time, the grand list is also growing, so the city is growing. And as the city grows, there's more taxpayers to share the burden. So, one cent on the dollar of your tax rate actually generates more and more revenue that the, that the district can use to pay down the debt service and work on these improvements, uh, because there's more people paying, and more, more companies, more, more property owners, whether it's commercial or residential. So, that naturally is occurring. One thing, again, I'm going back to the limitations of modeling and the sensitivity complication or complexity of these different scenarios, is that these all have different timings based on when it would be reasonable to expect that you could sell three properties and build a new school and have all the students mobility-wise and logistically, um, in those schools. So, that affects when you actually bond for the, for the, um, debt and how much debt you're paying with, over time and in those particular years. It also affects the timing of when that sale, those sale proceeds, and it affects the timing of when you invest, and so you're making those capital outlays and inflation of construction costs over time. Let's go to the next slide, which is going to the whole district. So, now, looking at it with, not just looking at elementary, but if you add the upgrades to be doing at the middle school and the high school. Now, these are the numbers, these are more akin to the numbers you saw in the spring, which, um, had the whole district. We had broken out the, the elementary just as a, um, response to some of the questions we'd been getting, but in the scenarios, um, what, in the, in the whole district, where you're doing the whole, uh, shebang, you can see that the numbers for stewardship, again, go down over time as you, as you have new facilities and you're doing these upgrades, where you're actually preventing some of the stewardship needs, upgrades and accommodations, and the new school. So, those are kind of the big numbers that you look at when you're trying to compare scenario to scenario, when you're thinking of doing everything. And then, on the next slide, again, going out to, oh, that's right, added a different way of looking at it, which is breaking it out by school or by school type. So, if you have the overall district, there's overall district improvements that stay the same, that they're going to need to be, there's going to be costs with the overall district that don't really change because you're, you're serving an entire district, um, so buses, shared, um, services among all the schools. Elementary schools for new and existing, we put that number in there, that shows elementary, shows middle school and high school. You would think that the number would be the same for middle school and high school upgrades, or at least high school, because they're not accommodating any of the students, but the, the difference for the change between 27 million and 29 million is really when that is constructed. So, the estimate is actually going to inflate with, with, if you, if you project deferring the school to be built later. So, that's the, the, the difference between those is, is inflation. Again, those numbers match, the bottom numbers match the previous slide. And then, the next slide, again, breaks this out into tax rate. And if you look at the house tax rate, again, you're looking at, um, a delta, you're, you're looking at the whole, the whole picture of what it would cost to, um, to do the, to do the upgrades at the, for, again, for the whole district. So, let's go to the next slide, which has to do with 21st century. These are much bigger numbers. And so, I mean, I'm sure everyone has a photographic memory, so let me make sure, um, I refresh mine, which is that, for instance, in the, if you do the whole district with all the elementary reconfigurations and the middle school and high school, in scenario three, for instance, the previous slide, it was 59 million. That's if you do the upgrades and then you have 21st century new schools. If you do 21st century upgrades to all the schools and you build the, the new schools at 21st century in scenario three, it's 195 million. Big difference. Um, I don't know what else I should say about that, but let's move on to the next, the last slide, which is looking at the tax, uh, impact of that to, to go to the, to the 21st century, um, model. You're looking at, again, this scenario one stays the same because you're only doing stewardship, you're not doing any increases. So, looking at scenario two at 13,450 dollars versus actually 13,000 dollars in scenario five, which is the new school, it's actually less than scenario two, when you're doing all 21st century upgrades, because you're doing all 21st century upgrades to three elementaries instead of just building one from scratch. I'm going to check my notes, so I figure if I've hit all of those points, um, which I think I have, but I guess it's maybe more time for questions and answers, because I just threw a lot of data out there. Okay. Broke the last register, Tom. Topical. I, I avoided the Pokemon.
I know the board has obviously worked with Whittenburg quite a bit, but are there any immediate questions from the board before we open it up for public questions?
Can I just clarify something on, um, I'm looking at, um, slide 16.
Yes.
That's the elementary only.
Yep.
Um, and there's 23 million in stewardship on scenario one.
Yep.
But when you flip to the whole district on slide 18, that is also 23 million on scenario one.
Oh, boy.
I thought what we had said for the case of elementary only was that stewardship was sort of a background number. We were, what we were saying with the elementary only case, and correct me if I'm wrong, because we had discussed this previously, and how we wanted to map out that case, that stewardship was going to be constant across all these different iterations.
Right.
The, the elementary only piece comes in, in the fact that you're not upgrading the high schools, or the middle school, or, or anything other than the elementary schools and doing the reconfiguration of the elementary schools.
That's one lens to look through, yeah. I think, you know, in this case, I mean, you can cut the numbers a lot of different ways, and in this particular presentation of, you know, this chart that I pulled out of the model, um, these were the numbers that, yes, we kept stewardship at all five schools and then just the reconfiguration costs, so no upgrades at those.
It's more of a footnote that it, that that stewardship does include all schools.
It's a really good point, yeah, absolutely.
Got it. Thank you.
For some last-minute edits today.
Again, in the slide 19, it's, there are about 6 million as the stewardship.
Yeah, of that, you could, you could back it out of that.
Gotcha.
Yeah, or, yeah.
Any questions from the public?
And just to, I'm sorry, one more quick one. Just to clarify your comments, Stephanie, on pre-K. The pre-K that you were referring to is the fact that the current configuration has three classrooms.
That's right.
That are pre-K across the three elementary schools.
Right.
So, it's not all of South Burlington pre-K, it's just those three existing.
That's right.
Okay, thanks.
Can you just give a little bit of background about where the numbers came from on the, um, uh, 21st century versus that? You know, for example, scenario two, elementary schools goes from 7 million to 81 million. Can you just explain what some of those 21st century related costs are?
Yeah, I can try. These numbers came from the architects, so, um, from Doran Whittier, um, who did all the work during the task force, they developed those estimates. Um, there was a number, you know, the number for the basic upgrades, which we talked about, kind of what that included, and then the 21st century learning upgrades were over and beyond that, so it.
No, strictly architectural, not, not educational, not.
Right, no, that's for space only.
Expenses, it's just for the building.
Just for the construction cost, yeah. That much I do know.
Question over here.
Um, I attended an earlier meeting, um, when you first presented this information, and our colleagues saying that the, um, numbers you're giving are only accurate to an order of magnitude.
Mm-hmm.
Those numbers are like, all the same, except for the first one, if you look at orders of magnitude. I mean, there's, an order of magnitude is 100 million versus 10 million. 10, 20, 30, 40, 50, 60, 70, 80, 90 million are all the same, when you look at orders of magnitude, 100 million is then the order of magnitude. Is this true, am I interpreting this correctly?
I agree with your statement, that that, that's one way of looking at order of magnitude. The way we, we look at it is to say that these are estimates and that there is a, um, a level of, yes, I think an order of magnitude between some of these scenarios, 30 million does have an impact on the bottom line and does have an impact as it relates to individual, um, bonds that are done over time, and when those bonds are done and, and can have a big impact on the tax rate as a result. How you want to per, to interpret the order of magnitude is, is entirely up to you. I also think, when we say order of magnitude, we're talking about, um, if we throw in, well, oh, you forgot paving the parking lot at 100,000 dollars, it's not going to make, it's not going to swing the pendulum one way or another necessarily, and what we're trying to do here is, is wrap, wrap many, many heads around the vari, the, the different scenarios. And truthfully, when we endeavored into the exercise, we didn't know what the variation would be. And there were a lot of, um, guesses as to which would be most expensive, least expensive, and where, where that would fall, so.
Sure, and I understand, I mean, you can only do the best that you can, modeling is never going to be certain, but I guess I'm curious how you would capture that uncertainty. I'm just, I, if, if you put the numbers out there and they look like hard numbers, then people get hung up on like, oh, 195 million versus 200 million, and I'm wondering what really the level of uncertainty is between the different options that you're presenting, not just on the slide, but on all the slides.
Mm-hmm. I think that gets to the question of how much margin of error is there?
Yes.
And I've not calculated that precisely by any means, and I'm not going to even throw out a percentage, but there is a margin of error. Of course, there is, not only with limitations of, of modeling, but the information we have today, um, the amount of, of factors, the, I mean, the number of variables you add, the more variables you add, the more, the increase of mar, possible margin of error. These numbers, as you said, you're totally right, that we really, you know, throwing out a number, people can start to get stuck on a number, and, um, but you have to have something to respond to when you're trying to make an evaluation of one versus another. And if, if it came down to it, and again, I'm not in, in charge of any, doing the actual analysis or the evaluation of the, the viability of the options, or the, or the importance and relevance to the, the community in terms of value, but looking at the numbers from one to the other, if you were to pick two scenarios and bore down further, that order of magnitude may, that was one point we were making, was that it, it may vary, you may see more discrepancy once you've gotten more precise numbers and you've done a little bit more scrubbing and you've gotten more confirmed accurate, um, estimates from architects, and, and that is important to do, as, this is phase one, or whatever phase we're on, but that, that would be in your next phase, and you'd want to understand, is it 200 million or 195 million, because there's a difference.
Yeah, I guess I'd just like, I don't know, I've personally done modeling in my own life, not in this type, um, realm, but there's a lot of uncertainty here, and I'd really like the public and the board to consider that these are relative, but the absolute value that you're going to come up with.
Mm-hmm. I couldn't have said it better myself. Absolute value and relative, yes, that's all very true.
Is any of this expense contributed to from the general education budget as opposed to capital investments, so it would be subject to state tax rates increasing because of the increase in the cost per student, normal student? Was all of this.
There were like, two, two questions I can answer.
Is this pure capital and will not be on the budget at all?
This would be over and above the budget, what, what.
Even this, is this pure stewardship is, is over the budget?
Well, and the numbers we're showing here, the way that it's being shown, in the model, we actually did, um, take out, we put in a line of other monies, that was one of the, the, um, other sources of financing. We assumed that a certain amount of stewardship every year would be coming out of the operating budget. So, this is over and beyond what would already go into the operating budget, and then, the tax rate, what you saw on the tax slides, is accounting for the natural inflation of that operating budget anyway. And then, we did the incremental addition for, for debt service for capital, leading to the total.
So, it's the normal operating budget, which includes teacher salaries increases.
Yep.
And any budgetary component which is not represented here, but could be for.
Right.
For minor, minority amount of stewardship, and then the capital bonding cost on top.
Right. And I mean, you know, in the, in the model, you can see a breakdown, I think we showed it at the last meeting, was, you know, what would be the natural inflation anyway that would account for the operating budget increases over time and include a portion of the stewardship? Then, what's the amount directly correlated to debt service, and then your total tax bill after that? It's a level of detail that we omitted tonight for a lot.
And have you done, are there any comps that should have been counted for vacated in school lands?
There are. There's a couple, um.
Can you tell us what they are?
No. There were two appraisal, there was, uh, the appraisal that was done at Markcott, that was done last year, I believe, um, looked at two other properties in Chittenden County, Mansfield School, does Art, does any of this ring with you? I'm thinking of the, the, the thing that came out last year that, um, was about, about Mansfield, there was a school on Man, in Mansfield School that was a comparable. Let me get to the real point, which is that when we did our highest and best use, um, analysis and broker's opinion of value, we were looking more at not, not, not reusing the building, but the value there is going to be in the land value and the location value, and then, you have to add in what are the zoning complexities and all of that, because in some situation, yeah, highest and best use in some circumstances may not be reusing the building, so.
Do any of your models include removing the whole component, selling the properties, or just, just, you know, they revert to public use?
Well, if they reverted to public use, that, in every scenario, we assumed that the district would somehow be compensated, because the district is not going to hold a property that's not being used for a school. So, it would be, and that's all, that's how we assumed it. And whether it goes to a public facility, a public use or not.
So, there are no models where the, the vacated property is not acquired and paid for somehow?
That's correct, in these results.
One more question, the stewardship, how does the stewardship fall year by year in the scenarios, when, how do the upgrades replace the money for the stewardship?
When you've done an upgrade to a school, we made, we made a, um, an assumption, a variable within that, which is that if you make an upgrade to a school, you may be, um, surpassing the need for that, that otherwise-needed stewardship cost. So, if you replace a whole wing of Orchard in order to accommodate new students, you no longer need to replace that roof that you would have if you left the school operating as-is, because you've now replaced the whole roof, it's part of the capital cost of doing that. And so, we, we did not go through line item by line item at all, we assumed percentages. That once a school closes, um, zero stewardship after that. What, if you upgrade a school, you may only need 85%, I think was one of the variables we used, 85% of the stewardship budget, because now you've replaced, um, you've already done some of those improvements as a result of doing the upgrades.
First, I guess a point of clarification. I would take exception to the wording of 21st century learning as the Cadillac.
Oh, okay.
And we need to be competitive, we need to get our schools into a 21st century learning environment, through some pace and some measure pace, but to reference it as a Cadillac option, not really doing the discussion much justice.
Fair point.
But it is expensive.
Whether it's expensive or not is not the question. The question is, are we buying a Cadillac, or are we buying appropriate educational services for our children in the 21st century? That's the point. Uh, the second piece is, have you done an analysis comparing option four here with option Q from the task force?
Option Q was.
Option Q from the task force, I think they're identical. The cost numbers that were put together with, I believe, the same team members.
Yep.
Had that at 137 million dollars. It's now 200 million dollars. It would be good to know what the deltas were there and what drove that cost, because the task force thought 137 million dollars was high. Now, we're up at 200 million dollars.
I think it was option O and, and all, and scenario four that are comparable. Option Q and, and scenario five. Those were the comparables. And, and we did go back to those numbers. I mean, we used those numbers, that's the exact numbers we used, were from Frank Locker's work when, within the task force, he developed a bunch of charts that were for option Q that ended up in the report and that he forwarded to us with the background data, um, with the background calculations for how much per square foot and all of those different calculations. Some of those numbers did change from last year, but.
And I expect that they probably would, but in, in order to keep the community involved in the dialogue and not jump from model to model to model, it would be good to show where things changed and how you arrived with these numbers compared to what we've already seen.
Mm-hmm. It could be a good, a, a really important footnote to, if it's due to inflation or if it's due to some change in, why did it change to put that in the report?
And even if it is, as you say, Stephanie, um, scenario five versus option Q, we're going from a hundred and thirty-seven to a hundred and sixty.
Right.
That's nearly fifty million dollars.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
What we had originally considered.
Now, I will say that, and I don't, I, I don't know the methodology entirely and, and the, did that include? There were savings that weren't, that weren't included here that may have been included there? Those were pure cr- capital costs?
Operational savings and they did not?
Okay.
Include, um, any potential repurposing, any forms of resale?
From selling, yeah. So that brings up a good point, which is that we are putting together a final report on the, our findings that detail ad nauseam the, the model so that not people, you know, you can understand. And by people, I mean, sometimes, you know, six months down the road, you forget what, what was done and you have a question about one of those details. So we're, we're trying to memorialize that in a report that, that really spells this all out, everything I've said tonight, everything we said in March. That kind of feedback is really helpful. We'll end up putting that in the report and that's a good exhibit we can use to, to try to compare and make sure we explain whatever delta that is or adjust as needed, so.
That would be great. If a formal request is needed of the school board, I would request the school board ask the consultant to include a, um, a roadmap that shows how you got from the task force to these numbers.
Monica?
Yeah, sorry, a follow-up and it kind of follows what Art was saying too. Um, the twenty-first century piece, the Dean Whittier numbers, were they new estimates based on some new information that the, um, David may have provided in terms of what does twenty-first century learning look like? Or was it the same?
No.
Modeling from the task force's time?
Same methodology, yeah.
Because that's what's missing there is, one of the things Task Force asked for, which is, tell us educators, please, what does twenty-first century modeling look like? Because it's not just about walls and doors. So it sounds to me like the educational piece cost, the academic cost,
Mm-hmm.
um, which may or may not have anything to do with the new wall, is not considered here. So I would say that too is not, I wouldn't necessarily call it twenty-first century learning because it's told to us by, yes, Frank, but also by architects and not by?
Right.
Educators other than Frank's experience.
Right.
And that was a, that was a critical next step request of the task force.
Gotcha.
Not that I want to, let me piggyback on your.
Well, we banter, aren't I? We like to banter.
Um, but that's a good, good point. And so if the operational piece isn't part of here, the educators, for instance, does that show up in the operational budget? And if it does, what's the add-on to the number that we see here to represent any changes that are required on the academic side to operationalize, implement the twenty-first century building, facility costs that are baked into the model?
And that, the operational savings is not shown on this chart, but is factored into the ta- into the tax numbers?
I would say savings, just to note whatever the costs are to operationalize. It may be a savings. It may actually be not a savings, which is some place to identify what are the teacher needs or just the whole list of operational costs so we can get the complete picture.
Operational change, yeah.
Stephanie, the question I had, obviously, the cost of money and time, value of money is important. We're not looking at interest rates necessarily rising in the immediate future. Um, but nonetheless, is there a time horizon that was put on this so that we had, um, some understanding of what the timeframe would be?
Hmm. Yes. There were times in the model and, and time assumptions made. Uh, the choice was not to disclose necessarily all of those times because it would affect the negotiation of possible sales. But those, there were judgment calls made about how long it would take based on when a vote would occur per scenario, uh, based on how long it would take to get some fin- you know, to find the financing, to find the buyer.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I just have a question. Has this, we're seeing the numbers sort of in a different way with maybe a little more depth than we did at the public meeting in March?
Yeah.
Um, how much would you say the numbers have changed versus just presented in a different way?
Right. Um, that's a great question. They have not changed significantly, but they did change because of the, those, those factors like the state payback no longer needed, needing to be required, the Oak Creek appraisal. Those types of numbers did change, um, the estimates somewhat. Um, actually, could you go back a few slides? This, this one is the twenty-first century, um, model and I think that's probably, uh, maybe up one. Yeah. That one's more akin to what we've seen, what we saw last time. And those numbers, I had the old numbers. Does anyone have the old presentation from March? I have them in my suitcase, briefcase over there. Is that a question we want answered? No, I can run and grab my notebook.
Ask because the numbers are different than the last time we saw them publicly. And if they're that different in three months?
Right.
And we're talking about a margin of error. I think the margin of error is compounded by lots of other factors that can come up just in, what you put into your model, never even mind.
Right.
What happens to come there, so.
Yeah, or what happens in reality?
We did the exact same analysis.
Think that was it, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, roughly, I think. I just don't have that right in front of me. This one, I think this one's actually a little bit older. Um, the other aspect, they, they did change, the number we gave before also factored in the property sales and the operational savings and looked at it from a debt service perspective, which we had many public members say, you know, that's too confusing, just show us gross cost and capital costs. So that's what this is, is capital costs and the stewardship costs, not the debt service over twenty years, which is what we previously showed, which factors in savings as well as cost of financing. So it altered the numbers a little bit. Um, that's, but it's, it's a good point. But yes, there's a lot of variability and a ton of variability that can come up with just any amount of time, you know, changing a lot of the, because there are so many variables.
Other questions for Stephanie?
Yeah.
I was wondering, uh, for scenario one, I, what kind of list, uh, and what kind of information went into the assessment of the maintenance that you'll be performing on the schools? Because I think one of my biggest concerns about this effort is that I don't really have a sense of what's actually needed in the here and now. It's like, we're talking about all these possibilities and I don't have anything to compare that, I guess, in terms of the status quo. So I'm interested to know if that's listed somewhere and what level of detail.
The background for putting together the stewardship estimates was very detailed and had a, and it was projected for years one through ten. And then after that was, was inflated versus actually going through each cost. But there were specific known costs that were coming up in future years that are, are large-scale projects. And so those numbers were really detailed.
And will those be published as part of your report?
Yeah, I believe.
And actually, our stewardship plan.
Is in the budget book, yeah, I was just looking.
In the budget book, we do have it online and it's something that we have been doing for at least, I'm going to say nine, maybe ten years. It's become more detailed as we've gone on and we've made, you know, modifications to it as well as we have discoveries. But nonetheless, that's the, that's been a critical guidepost for, for that work.
Yeah, page fourteen of the budget book, if you find the budget book on the district website or if you have a copy from March when we voted on it, has a ten-year stewardship projection in a fairly reasonably detailed level.
Thank you.
Art?
That was a really good question. It just jogged up a buck when I had it. Scenario one, that is strictly stewardship, right? That's just functionally maintenance for the buildings over twenty years in this model.
Mm-hmm.
There.
That's correct, that's right.
We have fifty-year-old buildings that weren't built to last seventy years.
Mm-hmm.
It seems that that number is extremely low. And that you would expect the stewardship cost to accelerate as we get closer to that twenty-year mark and to go a million dollars roughly a year for five buildings.
Yeah.
Doesn't seem like a, a number that is a good test against the rest of the numbers.
Fair point.
And I think in, in some way, you know, we're, we're a district that has been, again, our buildings aren't, aren't new. Um, but we as a district with our community behind us have been doing diligent work to maintain our facilities. So, um, part of, I think, the costs, and again, I can't specifically, you know, recite every single, uh, component in there at the moment. But nonetheless, because we've been doing that in each of those scenarios, we're, it's continuing that effort to maintain them. So, um, I think perhaps that would be different if you were in different places where you would see significant increased costs, um, in stewardship if you weren't caring for those things.
And that's certainly reflected in the budgets when you look at the utility costs and the replicates that have been done.
Yep. But, you know, elevators, you know, probably wouldn't have been done in other places. Roofs maybe not to the same year and period of time. Air handler devices and things of that nature, you know, window upgrades, you know, may have been totally avoided. So that would significantly magnify, you know, that stewardship cost scenario, my guess, if we hadn't been doing some of these things in, in the, in the years past.
Right. And I guess what I'm trying to get at is, you have a thirty-five million dollar delta between scenario one and scenario two. If we're going to have a discussion about what the actual costs are and whether the investment should be in scenario one versus scenario two, selling or repurposing, um, or building new, then scenario one is really critical to this discussion. If it's artificially low, then we're not making the decisions with the information that we really should be making the decisions with.
Well, and for our part, you know, coming from a, from a real estate background, we, we did ask that, you know, we sharpened the pencil on the years that are projected, that we know, years one through ten. What's known about these buildings? What's known as, as a projec- and what, not just known, but what's un- un- inevitable, you know, for those facilities? And then after year ten, it becomes pretty hard to project. And so, you know, we used a certain factor that we thought was a little more aggressive or, you know, conservative because of the age of some of the facilities, so.
That's a good point. So perhaps it's nothing more than adding an asterisk and a footnote to say, listen, it may not be this number.
Mm-hmm.
It may be more than this number.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Good point, yep.
And the, just so I understand, and the, um, no payback to the state until the twenty-twenty-one timeframe, that does set the clock ticking right now because it would be if we don't have something in place or the financing ready, is that what we're talking? What goes into that twenty-twenty-one, David, do you know?
Well, the legislature made a decision based on that, the payback to the state. And again, the, the sunset period, I don't think it would be, would have been wise for them to extend it inevitably, right? They set that date based on, you know, the opportunity particular centered around consolidation efforts within the state, I believe. You'd have to specifically ask, you know, and read that report more detailed. But that was, that was the purpose. That does not mean, however, there's a lot of things that change legislatively and that certainly could be on the table again. At the present time, it sunsets in twenty-twenty-one, that's what we do.
And Pat, were you asking about what triggers it?
How far into a project would you have to be in order to have that part forgiven?
Right.
Just that you've committed to it or that you've broken ground or you?
Purchase and sale or, yeah, money is exchanged.
Or is that kind of?
I don't, I don't know necessarily. I, I haven't read specifically on where that timing would trigger.
The model, um, models it that up to twenty-twenty-one, that if a, if a property, um, has been transferred by twenty-twenty-one, that there'd been, that there would have been an exchange by that point.
Okay.
And you can develop, you can create transactions that are contingent, but that, that, that transaction would have occurred at that point.
So, and for instance, could the school be sold to the city prior to the five-year window? Still teach in the school while plans are being done for something outside that five-year window?
Don't look at me.
I'm more than okay with David and Mark.
Well, I, I would defer that, you know, that would, you know, that would fall on legal opinion and interpretation of a variety of factors, right?
I just want to follow up on Art's comment earlier about the difference between this report and the task force's report was the whole point of us hiring White and Burke was to get this professional perspective on the economic analysis. So I think if we're going to trust a number, this is the one we paid to trust. And I think like we talked about, some inconsistencies, um, known inconsistencies and unknown inconsistencies. So this was sort of the expert piece. And that being said, um, we know it has specific limitations. It's here for the financial perspective. It did not at all include impacts on neighborhoods, impacts on environment or the education benefit. So this is all building. So by saying, you know, we're not interested in the, you know, or not saying that, but if it's really expensive to do twenty-first century buildings, it has nothing to do with the teaching that goes on in this specific building. So I think they're just, you know, clarifications that this isn't everything in one. This is just a specific piece.
Those are a couple of good points, Abby, just as a, a follow-up to that clarification is, we did pay Dorn Whittier to do the work that they did similar to this as part of the task force, just as we paid the other consultants. It wasn't gratis, it was coming out of the community budget and they were experts as well. So that should be balanced and that was the reason I'm asking for the crosswalk, how we got from one to the other. So we can keep the discussion kind of clean as.
Yeah, we stood on the shoulders of that work, so, you know, it really is, it'd be good to have a piece, I think, in the report that talks about where the data came from, what was added to it.
Monica?
Yeah, um, separate topic, uh, high school. And I believe that in, um, none of the scenarios, a new high school was considered. However, in the, in the twenty-first century version?
Right.
There are some higher numbers. Do we assume that those, one of the questions that we drafted with on the task force was, in regard to the high school, if you're going to do so much renovation, is it just better to go new? And I'm wondering if these numbers may reflect some renovation versus just going new? Cause they're quite high, ninety million.
Yeah, that's, that's all.
Basically the same building with renovation.
Yep. And same number from task force, yeah.
Have a situation in which you looked at new building.
That was not one of the scenarios and, you know, again, we took that same data from Dorn Whittier and added, you know, added the other factors to it, so.
And I think it would be safe to say if, if that was a, an avenue that, that, um, the board slash community wanted to go towards, then there would be a conversation around what would be the best use of those dollars spent. I mean, I think then you get into, should we keep that portion of the building given some of the complexities of that location of the building? Or should we build something beside it and then take that other one down for that amount of money? So, I mean, I think there's some, you know, there would be, need to be, um, some cost valuations, you know, of those, those types of decisions, Monica.
Yeah.
I continue to be a little bit confused about where the operational costs are scattered throughout the various charts. But that being said, you don't have a chart about what happens in year twenty-one? What happens in year twenty-one, Stephanie, when, I, you had a twenty-year financing it looked like on your earlier chart?
Um, not twenty-year financing, but twenty-year window of how far out we projected.
Well, assuming it's twenty-year financing.
But it's most thirty-year financing.
What happens in year?
Right.
What happens in year twenty-one or year thirty-one? I mean?
I mean.
Just as a general statement of reflecting on the scenarios where, you know, we're looking at impacts on taxpayers. What happens when the debt is paid off on the scenarios? And which one emerges from that as a, a savings or a cost to the taxpayer over the next forty or fifty years, life of that facility? We're now dealing with five fifty-year-old roughly facilities.
Right.
People will be sitting in these chairs in fifty years dealing with that or thirty years or twenty years.
Mm-hmm.
What does that look like?
It's a great question.
My point is?
Yeah.
It's harder to stop in a particular year and not assume what follows.
Sure.
And that, I.
And that's, I mean, and that's one of the hard time, right? No, it wasn't.
We got to look long-term.
It's the question of, you know, where do you, where do you draw it? It can keep going, it can keep going. You know, we've, we looked at, I remember, you know, really early on picking the window. You know, do you say ten years? Everyone said, no, ten years is too short. Fifteen feels too arbitrary. Twenty feels right. Thirty feels right. Thirty feels too long. So, you know, it, it resulted with a twenty-year window, but you could, we could have picked a thirty-year window and we'd be asking about fifty years, as we should as a community. a 30-year window and we'd be asking about 50 years, as we should as a community. I don't disagree.
No, I know, and that wasn't your task, really. I was just kind of looking for a generalized statement about.
Well, I mean.
Emerges from, from, from your perspective.
From a financial perspective, you know, you can trend these lines, you can look at any of the numbers and see, okay, if from 10 to 15 to 20 years, the trend, the, the lines are going to follow those trends more or less, once you have the 20 years of, we've input 20 years of, of data there, you can, you can assume, make some assumptions about what those are going to continue to do, but then we haven't added in, okay, now that it's been 20 years since the facility's been built, there's going to be a new level of cost. So, you know, those haven't been added in. So I couldn't speculate as far out as that.
Can I comment on this, though? Because I think that what we do know is that the 500 Dorset property is going to be good and solid for a long time. And from a city perspective, there are so many unknowns that we will know in the next five to 10 years about what happens with our city center, what happens with, you know, the whole airport area, so many changes coming on the city side. And there were conversations during the task force of, well, will a change with the schools be an impetus to further some of those changes more? But that kind of puts the school as the first domino with so many changes coming within the city. I would say it might be easier to look at what would happen in 20 years, five years from now. So 25 years from now would be easier to predict than 20 years from now, which would have more city results.
Well, and one thing to, to add to that, I think that, you know, we'll put in our recommendations is that we've built this model, you've paid for the model. What I, you know, would hope to see is that it becomes a living document, a living tool to be used, that as more variables are known, I mean, as, as Abby mentioned, it, you know, in three months' time, there's been new variables added. So as you know more variables, you can add them. But it's also a matter of, you're not going to do that across five scenarios and you're not going to manage it every day, like, I'm a little bit cross-eyed after the day I just had in, in there. So you're not going to do that every single day, but, you know, if you're going to do it over, you know, and, and hone into certain scenarios, using the tool to, to add more certainty as you have new information.
If I understood your response to Kevin correctly, Stephanie, the cost in here are 20-year costs, but the financing is 30-years of financing.
That's right.
So the tax impact to the citizen is lower than it will actually be because we have 10 years of costs that are not accounted for.
I would, I would rebut that by saying that what we've shown are the tax impacts in those particular years. And so that's in 2036 is our 20-year, in, in year 20, what tax impact will that have? That is based on a 30-year bond.
But you don't have 10 years' worth of costs in there for, say, in scenario one. You only have 20 years of costs in there. So my request would be to see what the tax impact is based on 20 years of cost and 20 years of financing.
But you keep going and going, because then if you have 20 years, if you bond in year 20 for the costs you have in year 20, now you're looking at year 40.
No doubt, but we don't know what those, if, if we're going to say we don't know the costs for years 10 to 20, what value is creating a financial model for years 20 to 30 when we have?
Well, what I can tell you is we can isolate, and we have isolated, what's the total interest? So we look at, we have a, a number of what's total interest, it's not one of the line items on this, these slides, but we have total interest, and that number is spread out over the course of however long, you know, so if you bond in year 10 and you use a 30-year instrument, you now have a 40-year window that you're looking at, that's spread out. You're just so skeptical.
You still only have 20 years of costs in there, you know?
Costs, what do you mean costs? Debt of, the cost of debt?
Yes, for stewardship costs. If we were to maintain scenario one beyond 20 years, there will be costs in those out years past 20.
Yes.
That are not included in the 30-year finance model. So the tax rate proposed to the community is not accurate because we don't have, you would have to take out another bond to accommodate whatever costs would happen in that 10-year window, which would get added on to the tax rate that's showing here.
But we have costs from year one to year 20. So we have costs in there from year one to year 20.
I disagree with that.
And if you bond for that cost in year 20, right, you're going to be paying for that years.
I'm good with that. Then I'll say that we're going to have to take out a separate bond in year 20 for 20 to 30, and those costs for that stewardship should be added to the total tax burden because it's going, that's what we're actually going to pay.
I disagree, because I think in year 20, you're paying the amount that you're, that you've now bonded for up to year 20. So you, you're paying all that debt service. And the way the model looks is, is a triangle of going out like this, because each new bond you've taken out, you now have new debt service on it, year after year after year. We're going to work on some language in terms of being able to understand that and put it into a report.
In fairness to the rest of them.
Thank you. So it's, I mean, this is so interesting to see the actual numbers now, and for me, I'm just thinking, I'm barely broke and wanting to live in South Burlington. I love these schools, and when I see my taxes going up by $3,000, I'm just like, I mean, I don't have a lot. When we do have really great schools, and do you work with other districts like Burlington, where they have schools that were built in the 1900s and they're seemingly able to make those schools continue to work?
We are working for the city, for a facility at Burlington, actually, yeah.
You know, so that's the thing that I just, I, you know, I appreciate you giving us more information with the numbers, but I just can't, as a taxpayer, sit here and feel like I can pay more money when we have really great schools and these buildings are going to be fine and we can work it, work it out. And all this bonding on bonding on more bonding is just kind of daunting.
I don't disagree.
Okay, you have a question over here, Karen?
I think it would be helpful for more of the public especially, but if somebody's seeing this slide without being here, they may not understand that those numbers are going to increase anyway. So if like year 2026, scenario one, the 9414, of that 9414, what would be the normal increase in our taxes if we did nothing? And then what would it be, what's, you know, what's the, if you do do something to total up the 9414? This is really, I think, kind of misleading if somebody just saw the picture of that slide posted somewhere. Oh, my gosh, it's going to cost me $3,000 for that one year just to do the school. So it's probably going to increase to, like you were saying, I forget the number you pointed out, but maybe, you know, 8,600 anyway, if we didn't do anything. So, I mean, our taxes are just going to keep going up no matter what.
And that's a good point. I was, I was just conferring with Patrick that this, this slideshow should become available to the public, but I want to add footnotes like that to, that's helpful because without supervision, it would be very scary. And I think, you know, walking that fine line between data overload and, and framing would be helpful. So I'll add a couple of little notes before this goes out to the public, but.
Go ahead.
I appreciate the entire comment, and I just want to say to the board, this is not, does not have to do with the model so much, but just, the educational benefit has never been addressed in any kind of a solid way. I heard like vague discussions of what the benefit is that could have come to us, could be a school. Of course, we all know that kids have to have fun in schools, you know, you can't have water coming through the roof in a rain, they have to be in a decent temperature, this sort of thing. So we know that there's a certain level of quality of building that they need, but in terms of, especially this thing about 21st century learning, I feel really misleading because it's about building, there's no explicit tie to educational benefits that we've heard about or that I know about. Before the city takes all these costs, you have to spell these things out, you have to draw that line, and you have to ask those questions, because for me, the major draw of the South Burlington schools is that we have individual smaller elementary schools with small class sizes, and, and we're happy as is. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. And yes, if the building's broke, you got to fix it, but as far as the school, like, you know, what happens if you consolidate schools and people saying, well, I'm not so interested in South Burlington anymore, I'll go to Shelburne, I'll go to Colchester, I'll go to Essex, you know, like, I think that there's also, there's financial impacts from these educational decisions as well. So I, I understand that the financial modeling is important, I understand the city has to think about and plan for the future, but I'm just, I'm just so, I really don't want to see this cart foot forward. I want to hear about what our kids need, and honestly, I think it's very simple, I think they need basic stuff like good teachers, small classrooms, a good learning environment that has to do with the people that they're among, not the structures. And so I really, as a citizen, I think we hear way more evidence about that before we talk about all of this, especially.
Getting close to a good transition item, but I'll take one more.
This isn't necessarily for Stephanie specifically, but kind of piggybacks to what she's saying. In terms of, you know, buildings, yes, we need to have a good buildings and keep stewardship going and things like that, but we're probably way beyond going back to this particular model, but in my personal opinion, I think that the high school for learning for our students heading into adulthood and college and jobs, some of the facilities and classrooms in the high school need way more updating than like, you know, Chamberlain and Orchard and whatever happens with Central with the city, but, you know, the labs, the chemistry lab, it's so old. You know, I'd love to see our high schoolers really getting more updated education in terms of those facilities than, you know, if I still had a fourth grader at one of the elementary schools, I think they can excel with a lot of what is already there in the schools. Or, you know, we might have to sell Rick Marquardt and then, you know, figure out where to put kids. But I really would have loved to have seen something majorly done with the high school because that's where those kids, you know, I personally think need the most rigorous and great classrooms and things like that to get out in the real world, but.
Thanks. Any parting statements, Stephanie?
No.
Wise choice.
Really good questions.
Thank you very much, Stephanie.
Can I just point out logistical detail that there are three city councilors here, that's a quorum, I don't know if that was board, it was unplanned, we're not speaking to each other, we're not conducting city business.
Thanks.
It's on the record, thank you.
Any comments based on that presentation, those questions from any board members?
Just, I think we should give an update from what happened yesterday.
Yeah.
So folks know where we're heading since.
That sounds perfect. You want to start?
Sure. Because it is a good transition. As far as educational benefits, we've had a committee, Patrick and I have been working off and on for the last couple of months, looking with the administration at the education benefits. Now, the administration is the, they provide the expertise, but we really are the conduit between the community and the administration and for making this big decision with regards to the amount of money, or I should say, recommendation to the community if it involves any kind of sales or closing of schools. But in any event, I won't go too much in the detail because we're already a little bit behind, but, but I will say that we are planning on presenting the results of the two committees. There's also a committee that you've actually seen a lot of the results of what they've been doing through the presentation today. On the 23rd of August, we have a meeting schedule, which will be warned, and we're going to be, essentially our final committee reports with, on the finance side, on the educational benefit side, we're going to be presenting and discussing at that time. So I don't know that I should go into any more details.
No, I think that sounds fun. It's exactly what I was hoping, because I think your, your point was a valid one, and we've been working pretty hard to get some more details for our own comfort level as well on that, and we want to share that with the community. Is there anything that the finance committee wants to add to that short comment?
No, just that we've been, as Martin mentioned, we've been sort of working with Stephanie to dig down a little bit deeper on what the assumptions were that went into the model and where they came from and how they were developed, and then doing a few other analyses that are kind of outside the scope of the model. And those will be presented on the 23rd as well, so we're kind of working on our final report as well.
Great. Hope to see you all there. All right, that moves us onto the superintendent's report. Mr. Young.
Yeah, thank you. So I want to, there's two things on the agenda, I'll let people move. I have two items on my agenda for today. One is the class size update and plan that back in June, I provided, informed the board that I would come up along with Mark Tofilio some options specific to enrollment. I know that that was provided to you folks, you should have that. What I want to do, again, Mark is here, we've provided, again, I've worked with Mark, Mark has provided the options, we've updated on the chart the current class sizes, specifically the, the areas that are of concern, which were noted obviously before, are grades two and four. This is a result of changing the number of classroom teachers from four to three, based on moving some teachers around for other current areas of need in, in Orchard, based on enrollment. So currently, the enrollment is at 59 in grade two, and currently in grade four, 71. That's slightly down from the previous time we reported at 73. Actually, I don't know what, what was the previous, we were at 59 before, maybe 58, right?
We were at 58.
Yeah.
And we added 159.
Yeah. So what Mark and I have done, has gone, have gone through, again, Mark working on looking at the options, obviously option one, to keep the class size as is, move forward with the higher class sizes, he's done some pluses, and also some, some, what we would say, concerning features. Option two, to push the decision forward to a further date, allowing for a longer period of time. Option three A, to hire a classroom teacher for fourth, and again, you see the pluses and minuses. Option three B, to hire a classroom teacher in grade two. Option four, to hire part-time teachers to try push-in instruction, again, working collaboratively with the classroom teachers. Option five, look at hiring some parent educators in both grades. Option six, to look at reassigning kind of the current resources within the school to assist. So I, I want to just take a moment and let, let Mark speak a little bit to, to this and to, and to let you hear from him a little bit on the current situation at Orchard. Before I do that, I think it's important for the board to remember that I did have a contingent teacher in the budget this year. We did put a contingent teacher resource to Chamberlain School. This was predicated based on 42 students at that present time, actually, it was 42 to 45. Obviously, in kindergarten at Chamberlain, that would have been too big for the kindergarten, so the, that resource, that, that contingent teacher went to Chamberlain. And so we are currently, have utilized our contingent teacher, and, you know, we are where we are. So let me give Mark an opportunity just to update you. Thank you, Mark.
So we have been working with a couple of families moving in and out of the.
Just had a pair, Mark. Yeah. Thanks. Then you can be recorded and heard on RETN, which would be important. Thanks.
Thank you. So in that second grade population, we have added additional students, so we're up to 59. Our guidelines, the district guidelines say not to increase by 20 per classroom, so that would be, we have room for one more to make it to 20 per class, and then we would start going above the policy after that. We do, I am, those numbers are volatile, because I think there are two families that may be moving, we've kind of been approaching that, but might not be returning, and we just don't have clear, clear knowledge about. With the fourth grade, we lost two students, so moving, transferring out, so we are down to 71. And so to make it the guidelines at 25 per classroom, that would mean that we would need to have four students moving in and more to go above the guidelines. One thing I wanted to clarify also was that, we talked at the last meeting about decisions about class configuration. We are not out of the policy guidelines, we've always been in them. I just want to say that if we had moved a third grade teacher to the fourth grade or, or another grade, we would have been out of the guidelines with a third grade, right? And I don't think we ever discussed that the last time, and I wish we had clarified that more, so. Now, if you're asking for a recommendation from me, you know, as the educational leader at Orchard, of course, I'm going to advocate for more, for, for more teachers for smaller class sizes. Of course, we know that a more intimate setting in a classroom is going to provide a more rounder education for all the children, that's in both grades. I actually, what was nice was that we had curriculum camp, which Stuart Weiss put together workshop models after, after school was out, so I met extensively with both second grade and fourth grade, looking at these various options. And we really struggled with, could we do something with a halftime teacher? Could we have parent education support? What would it look like to have more? And in, in both groups, second and fourth grade separately, we just came to the conclusion that additional teaching, another teacher would be very advantageous. So as I say that as the Orchard educational leader, as I sit here as a South Burlington administrator, I understand that. We went through a process of what to do with the contingency teacher and we saw that, as you saw, that the numbers at Chamberlain kindergarten were just not in our favor. And so, and, and I always will support that process that David works us through. So as an administrator, I understand that you have a budget constraint and need to keep an eye on what you're asking of the taxpayers. We, we have exceptional teachers and they're going to do everything they can to make sure our, our students achieve. So, um, I'm very confident in them and we're also putting plans in place for our student support staff to provide as much assistance as possible.
Thank you, Mark. So, and why don't I just pause for just a bit and just let, if board members have questions before we go on, or I'm happy to respond.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Well, first, just a quick clarification as far as, is my understanding of what the policy of class size is, and you can tell me if I've misunderstood this, but, but that is an average class size for a cohort. And at least that's what I've heard the administration has interpreted that as. So one actually looks, I mean, it, my understanding is cohort across the district.
Right.
Uh, so you look at what your, your total number of fourth graders are, second graders are, uh, and the number of teachers and that comes up with the number relative to the policy. Uh, so, so even if one school was over 21 and the policy says 20, that does not necessarily mean there is a policy violation. Having said that, you know, it's a separate question of whether that's the right thing to do as far as having a class, uh, in, uh, second grade that has 21 kids in it, for instance. So that's one thing. The, the other is I had a question, uh, and then, and then a couple of questions. One is, you know, what, what is for, for the Orchard School in the second grade, uh, and in the fourth grade, what is, uh, the level experience of the current teachers that we have there? I mean, can you give a rough idea of how long that, you know, they've been there, the total cumulative, uh, years of teaching experience?
Are they, can you just tell us, are they first-year teachers?
Yeah, have they, have they seasoned, yeah, that's another...
Fourth grade is, uh, veteran to seasoned, yes. Uh, second grade, um, we have one teacher who is a veteran teacher, seasoned, uh, and two, um, within five years new, all highly competent and, um, always working to improve their craft.
My, my other question would be to both David and Mark is that, uh, coming in late July into early August, what is the pool of candidates, uh, that are available to fill a teaching slot? And, and the follow-up question for that would be, uh, if the pool is thin, uh, if we're going to have to accept a teacher that we might not otherwise accept and put a number of our students in that teacher's class, uh, as far as weighing how the education outcomes are, is it better to have slightly larger classes with these very experienced veteran good teachers, uh, as opposed to bringing in a fourth teacher who may not be as good of a teacher? So I guess the first question is, is the pool, you know, what's the pool available? Maybe it's not an issue, maybe you can, those kind of top-line teachers are available.
We didn't, we didn't rehearse that, that response, but I'm happy to...
Sure. As a seasoned principal, um, we've been, uh, keeping, I, I've been keeping tabs on, uh, people that come and go, uh, people that you've had long-term subs or had one-year contracts, student interns. So we've kind of have, we, we would still want to advertise if that was the case, um, nationally, of course. But at the same time, we've been trying, I've been working to keep the, right, I am, I am seeing people accepting jobs and asking to stay in contact, you know, what are, what are your, what's your journey like, where are you going? So, um, I, I think I would say that, uh, the gamble with, uh, the hiring pool would be worth it if, if that was, if that was the question to me, than larger class sizes.
I mean, I would say at the elementary level, you know, the pool typically is, is much greater than the upper end and more specialty positions. You know, we tend to see where elementary education is much more, um, highly, you know, there's many more candidates that we see that come in through school spring. Um, so I think the candidate pool would be there. Um, that said, I think anytime you onboard somebody new, particularly into our district, what we know and what we're working harder on is about the onboarding process. And when we talk about curriculum, when we talk about process, when we talk about, you know, professional development, when we talk about teaming, there's a component there that's not easy, you know? It's not easy even if you have all the good, all of the good skills. So, um, you know, I think it's, it's, it's a gamble. If it gets too late, I think you definitely are going to lose some of the, the folks that are of the better quality and so it could, it could not, it could hamper your, your opportunities to move forward versus, you know, the larger class size. That said, depending how large the class size gets. So if you get up well beyond your, your, your maximum, then I think you're into a place where, you know, now, now it's significantly affecting learning, uh, for the kids that are currently in that large class size.
So these cohorts are going to stay the same?
Well...
Probably. So does that mean that if these two teachers or one teacher were added, that they would go into the run rate for next year's budget?
Not necessarily. Again, part of what we have in our contract is, you know, we have one-year only contracts, anyone hired after July 15th. That said, even for new teachers that come onboard, there's a probationary period and through our contract, we have the opportunity to, you know, reduce through, through our, through our, you know, our process. Uh, that's never a great thing because we put resources into onboarding people, as I said earlier, but, um, you know, it's, it's not that you can't, you can't get rid of, you can't get rid of folks.
But, but are you going to need, I mean, if that 71 students stays and they go to fifth grade, are you going to need another teacher?
Well, remember, we did this, we did this last year, uh, for the fourth grade who now are going to the fifth grade. We added additional classroom teacher.
Mm-hmm.
And I think an appropriate point is looking at cohort tracking. And I think Mark, to his testament, this particular grade, actually both grades, had an additional teacher to their cohort in the previous years. As they matriculated up into the next grade, he's also got the previous year, those lower grades bumping up into those numbers, so he's reallocated that resource. So, um, cohort tracking is an important component. Four teachers were serving this group last year.
Okay.
Correct, Mark? Three for proposing for next year. And for the following year, depending upon what may happen in the ongoing years, could be we stand firm at three or he could go to, could propose to go back up to four and readjust. My point, my point being is that cohort tracking is important because if I was a class of kindergarten, we were in the class of kindergarten and we were amongst, you know, 20 kids that, that started in my class and then it grew a few more in my first and second and third and, I mean, whatever, that would be disadvantageous to continue to have a large, large cohort traveling through with a small number versus sometimes, on occasion, my class size was bigger.
Right. Do we know what the class sizes were for what's currently the second grade when they were in first grade and this fourth grade when they were in third grade?
We do.
I think it's on that...
Yeah, so, um, for Orchard, and this is, this is, and again, I, I know I had provided, I don't expect you to have it at your place, but when, when this particular group that we're talking about for Orchard in second grade, um, had, here is...
Sixty-six and four.
Currently, currently, right now, um, is 58, right?
Fifty-nine.
Or 59, excuse me, I'm not looking at that one. And if you look back when they were here, um, second grade when they were first grade last year, they were, they were 48 in three and when they were kindergarten, they were 51. So there's been those changes and we are studying sometimes those changes. Why, why all of a sudden are they going K to one? There's, there's, we do have some, some data on that around what we speculate people are doing. There's homeownership changes and things of that nature.
That was interesting to me when I was looking at the numbers, the historical numbers as I was trying to project future numbers for capacity issues as we were doing that capacity analysis, it was surprising to me how much a single cohort can jump up and down, like you're saying, by 10 students or nine students in a single school. And I don't, I'm not close enough to understand why that happens, but it's surprising to me that you don't have a big cohort that just continues to move through or a small cohort that moves through, but it does seem to, to vary.
So currently in our cohort right now, we have 141 as a low and we have 100 and 170 as a high. Here in the middle school, we have 136 as a low and 200 as a high. So quite honestly, what we know is that the, our eight core teachers handle obviously well the 136, but they still handle the 200 quite well, too. So that, that does demonstrate some of that, you know, obviously it's, it's all about scale.
And David, what is the, um, actual current kindergarten enrollment at Chamberlain?
Uh, current kindergarten enrollment and, um, again, Mark has more updated than, than what I have on, on Chamberlain, but they are currently at 42. They were, they were 45, 44, 42, 43, they're currently at 42. So again, this was the, our dilemma of taking two, obviously, was, was problematic and three puts them down, obviously, into that 14 per class.
I have a quick question. This spreadsheet that you had at our places last night that talked about budget and where we were versus budget, um, I didn't see the Chamberlain teacher, the one that we had added in May. Am I missing?
Because it was already, it was already in the budget, Bridgette, but it was held as a contingent position. It wasn't an add, it wasn't new money added.
Okay.
So that's why you don't see that. And I think this is, is an important point that, that, you know, highlighting what I provided you the board last night around kind of where we are, you know, under overage. Um, there were some decisions that were made around increasing some FTEs at the high school as a result of increasing numbers, as a result of choice. So those were some things that were done. Uh, there was a decision, uh, that we needed some outreach support, that was some FTE ad and money obviously went with that. But all said and done, I'm currently in a place, which this provides you, that I'm over. I'm over, I'm $124,000 over. And I think that's, that's also a component that I need to be responsive to you folks about as well. Um, so...
And David, so just so we know, does it say here somewhere that total FTE ads for the year, if these were included, I think we're up to like 15, right?
So I, this, this, I kind of gave you a summary of, of where we are with, with, with just dollars, okay? I do owe you the FTE, but with transitions, uh, I, I didn't want to throw that quickly out. I, I do owe that to you and that's, we're going to keep that on a kind of an ongoing, you know, you know, run, run review for you folks so that we do, you know, I don't necessarily need to give it every, every month, but it would be good to have available.
So what would be the trade-offs of, uh, I mean, if you need to hire one or two additional teachers, where's that coming from? What has to be cut?
So, so currently what I would, what I would say to you is that you look more completely at the entire picture. Um, and again, I want to be sensitive to where other revenues might come in, but I would then, um, if we needed another teacher, we could certainly look, is there any place we can first reduce, right? Um, obviously we have collective bargaining agreements and we'd have to be careful of that, but anywhere I could possibly reduce and/or working with the business manager, where are other opportunities and revenues that were beyond what we projected? And that would be, that would be where I would be working on if in fact we had a situation where we needed to add a, you know, added a teacher, added teacher or teachers.
So does that mean you're not asking us to...
So again, I, I, at the, at the present time, um, again, this is not necessarily Mark, it's me, I sit here, I, I need to make some, some recommendation to where we are. You can certainly, you know, overturn my decision. I think at the present time, we need to hold, it's really option one, that we keep the class sizes where we are currently. Um, again, Mark needs to work diligently with his, with his staff, which I believe is happening. Again, he referenced some really important summer work that's been going on, but we work to accommodate this group of students in the best way we can. We do have a, a district that provides excellent math and reading services and I would say that we need to stay firm there. That said, so that, that would be my direction to you, that there's, there's no, there's no decision, we stay with option one because we're still under the minimum or the maximums. I would say to you however, that if all of a sudden we go, if we increase in either grade by seven additional students, I don't know, I don't believe that would probably happen, but if we do, then we get up to 66 in, in second and, you know, 78 in fourth, then I think we need, I need to be back at you and say, I'm going to activate, what can I reduce and where can I find revenue? Because I think then you're, then you're in a place where at 66 in three, you're at 22 per class, you're pushing the upper limit for sure, and you'd be at 26 in a class and you're pushing, you know, the upper limit and you're also looking at significant space-related matters as well. So that, that would be, that's, that's where I'm at now. Again, if something, you know, we leave today and, and seven students come, you know, I'm going to be back in touch with you, but, um, that's where I'm at.
The, the other challenge here is that the number is never a hard number, right? We could get three kids coming tomorrow. Um, we had a family check in today, you know, but neither are these grades. Uh, one fourth grade family, another fourth grade family that, you know, we got, I got information, we tried to check with the parents to see, we heard that you might be moving, you know, can you give us a little, uh, actually within the district? And, uh, they said they were not ready. And so those kind of things are just, they just come and go. Sometime, a few years ago, we, we had to go down to two fifth grade classrooms and they went up momentarily to 27 and 26. We ended the year with 26 and we found supports for those classrooms. Uh, last year, our kindergarten closed, they all had 20 and one went to 21 for probably six weeks and then back down to 20. So those numbers are always volatile, it seems like to me.
I mean, Orchard isn't the only, the only, you know, the only area of concern as we look at the spread of our, of our student population through, throughout, you know, our third grade, you know, currently at Central School is, is an area that's also, you know, in that kind of category of, of watch. They're currently, again, right now at 59 with three teachers and so, you know, they're, they're on the cusp of, again, if, as Mark says, some could go, some could come, but nonetheless, there, it's not, there's other places that, that we as a district, on your behalf as administrators, are, are watching. And, um, so, I, I know that, and I believe that you need to know, that class size is an important component. It's not the, it's not the only component. Good instruction, um, you know, support services, good administration, you know, good, um, counseling services, good math and reading support, all of those, good EST support, which is how we support our, our learners that are behind. Those are critical components in addition to class size, right? Not, so it's not the end-all be-all, but it certainly is an area that, that we are watching. So that's where I'm at.
Comments, questions from the board? Direction?
I think there's some parents here also that might, I don't know if they wanted to add anything.
Thank you. Any comments from the public?
I have a public question. So I guess, uh, if you're looking at holding as-is, is a high of emergency knowledge, what is the impact that you perceive on educational outcomes? And I'd also like to know how those impacts would be rectified. The thing that you see in the research is, I mean, it's not just one year, it lasts for many years when you have a difference in class size and kind of surprisingly how long it lasts at times.
I, I would say that, you know, at the present state, I think that the educational opportunities remain high for this group. Um, again, with veteran teachers, um, with the knowledge of making those connections happen, I think it remains high. The opportunities for our students remain high because of not just class size, but because of the services, the, the activities that we have intact in our school, the relationships, those connections I think we have are, are high. So, um, I would say that if it grows significantly higher, then I think we have to be careful because not only do we have space constraints within a classroom, right? Then I would say that that starts to, to be more of a concern, but currently at the, at the numbers that we're at, I would say that the educational opportunities remain high.
You mean high, do you perceive impacts? It's a little bit...
No, I, I don't, I, I don't. I think in some ways, the, the, the number of students, uh, we have this at, in, in the Chamberlain School, I would say the smallest class size has its impact, too. It, it changes the, the diversity and the opportunity that kids would have and, again, I'll use an example of 13 kids in a class or 14, 10 of which are, which are, which are boys and only three girls, right? And again, that may not necessarily represent the diverse culture that we want our students to be learning in. So that could be perceived as disadvantageous and so we have to be sensitive to that as well. I, again, um, there, there's definitely a level where, where it starts to have impact, right? But at the current situation that we're at right now, I don't see that there's any disadvantageous outcomes currently.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
Just a quick question. I assume, David, the policy guidelines were... I assume, David, the policy guidelines were developed around both the optimum and maximum with no adverse impact on educational outcomes. With, I assume there has to be some cushion even in the maximum.
That's correct.
To accommodate for some, but, I mean, I guess I'm asking that as a question.
That's absolutely right. I mean, again, part of what Martin had asked before on the whole policy, it looks at the whole cohort tracking, although we look at kind of individual school in this particular case as also a benchmark. But they were designed as kind of circuit breakers, you know, to begin looking, right? You begin looking when you're, when you're reaching that high. We do have some different spaces in our district. We have some smaller classroom sizes, which also add into whether the circuit breaker ought to be triggered. In other words, you've got smaller square footage at Chamberlain and in some of our upper classes, that creates an earlier trigger than if at Orchard, we have slightly bigger class sizes and not, in all cases necessarily. So there's some other impacts that go into that, but you're absolutely right.
Moving back to the question.
I just want to say, I didn't want to put Mr. Teane in a difficult position. I know he, he works for you and, but he also works for the students. But I kind of, I heard him saying something a little bit different, so I just put that out there, that he would prefer to have that extra teaching capability. And I also, there's just so much housing stock coming online in South Burlington, thinking for the future. I can't imagine this won't continue to be an issue that's going to come up to us again. You see, Cider Mill, I think is gonna, I don't know if it's going to double, but it's got a second installation, there's South Village, there's apartments coming in. I, I don't see the numbers going down.
That's a good thing, and that's a good thing for us to the future. You know, and I actually want to agree with you. I mean, I love, I love the fact that things are growing. What we do know, that when we look at the demographers' information, is we look at all the white burst and there's all the data that starts to come in. And for the most part, what we are seeing, even though new development's happening, we still don't, it's not necessarily matriculating into new students. So I hope, I really want them to be wrong and I want us to continue to grow, you know? But that's kind of happening.
Do you know the number off the top of your head, how much we're down from last year? Because I remember looking at these numbers just last week and believe we're down ten students overall from last year. And then from about five years ago, I think we were at something like nine-seventy-two for K through five and we're down at nine-thirty-nine, I believe, unless it's changed.
Yeah, so I'll just tell you, the last three years, we were at nine-fifty-eight in years thirteen, fourteen. We were at nine-fifty-five, fourteen, fifteen. And then the current year that we've just come through, we're at nine-thirty-four. And so we're currently projected future at nine-thirty-nine. So again, most people would say, you know, that's pretty flat in Vermont and most, most of my colleagues around the state will be, are talking about significant changes to that. And John, who's coming from Southern Vermont, would, would I think is concurring that those changes are much more significant. But nonetheless, fifty-eight to thirty-nine is not upward, it's downward, although slight.
Well, and I think the reconciliation for the community member who's asking on housing stock, and I know I just listened to some information on fertility is the lowest it's been. I forget what the, what the proxy was, but what's the right proxy from a demographic standpoint? But our trend has been down in that, in that elementary area, which is intriguing because we know the housing starts are pretty active.
How is it that we don't have enough teachers? If the student numbers are going down.
It's, it's based on where they're allocated. The tricky thing is having three separate schools. I mean, we've talked about this a little bit before, three different schools with three or four classrooms per grade within those schools. It, it really depends on which neighborhood these kids move into and where they're allocated. It brings up a good point, though, and I've been sitting here listening to this conversation and thinking, you know, we're very constrained because we've already used up our contingency teacher for the year in terms of budget. This spreadsheet, which is, I'm sure, public information, it wasn't copied for everyone, is that in addition to already having used the contingency, we're about a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars over budget already on FTEs that we've added. So a special educator here, you know, a PE teacher there, you know, other things that have been added. My thought is, are we bending ourselves into a pretzel on an ongoing basis because we're just not leaving enough contingency? You know, on a school that has, or a system that has fifty-three to fifty-four, fifty-five classrooms, is one contingency teacher really enough? I mean, do we budget for fewer actual teachers, core teachers, and leave more contingency for ourselves in future years so that we can make these decisions a little more flexibly?
That's, I think it's a fine point. I'd like to bring that up under our budget planning if possible because I think it's, I'm just looking at the clock, it's nine o'clock, we're well behind schedule here. And I don't want to cut this conversation off, but I want to stay, stay true to it.
Just one real quick, I mean, I just, I'll just note that when we had nine-hundred-and-fifty-eight students in thirteen, fourteen, we had fifty-two teachers. On fourteen, fifteen, we had fifty-three. Last year, we had fifty-three and we're staying with fifty-three. So, you know, even though we've gone down some, we, we have one more teacher than we had when we had twenty more kids a few years ago.
Sir?
Yeah, so I just had one point to bring up. So I see in this preliminary, the third grade, which hasn't been mentioned, is forty-seven students. Is that right in Orchard? Forty-seven, it's still accurate, okay. So, and I also heard a point earlier, actually two of them. One lady back here just made, David, you made it earlier around cohort, the cohort size. So this, the group of, if you just look at the group that's going into fourth grade, when they were second graders, they were twenty-three-point-three average, which was the highest over the last four years as a group across the entire system. Now, we're going to put those third graders down into fourth grade at a twenty-three-point-six average, which will also be the highest as a group of students. So you're sort of getting a double hit on this group of kids who've, you know, were the highest group of, highest ratio or the highest per grade average as second graders. They'll all be the highest per class average as fourth graders. I understand there's a second grade issue, but I think one of the proposals was to transition the, one of those third grade teachers back to fourth grade. So just given that that current third grade class has always been on the low side of the norms, if you just sort of look at the historic, they've, and now they're going to be fifteen-point-six, if I'm doing my math right here. It would seem that while, and I get the guideline part of it, I'm reading that as well. It seems like this, this, this fourth grade class is sort of getting an unfair, they've already had one, one year where they took a big hit. Now we're being, we're asking the same kids to take another hit as far as being the biggest, biggest in, in history. So, you know, I would advocate for reconsider, reconsideration of moving a third grade resource to fourth grade for that, for that explicit reason.
Thanks for your feedback. Take that into consideration. So are any other comments from the public or any other direction from the board?
I just had a quick question. What happens if, with a contingency teacher, if all of a sudden you, Chamberlain does end up losing, like for kindergarten, like I just have not, like what would happen? Would you end up having class sizes of ten or?
You know, that's, it's a good point. I mean, it's a hard number because you're at forty-two. I mean, you'd have to lose quite a few to get down to, you know, that a reasonable K size. And, you know, that's our, that's our onboarding first experience into our, into our schools and that's why we do have that, that number, which is lower for our kindergarteners.
And I appreciate that.
It would have to get, it would have to get, you know, kind of similarly, you know, that seven or so or more students below.
Because two years ago at Central, you know, we had twenty-one kindergarten, my son, and, you know, it is, I mean, I didn't, I would have probably been like, whoa, we got to get, the number's lower. But, so it's just, you know, I know it's a struggle to figure out the class sizes, but I'm just wondering if Chamberlain did end up losing a couple of kids in that kindergarten class, that contingency could be used for?
Well, again, it's, it's hard because you, when you begin the year, this is the sensitivity around, you know, children, moms and dads and guardians making those beginning connections and relationships really important. And so this is the, this is the reason that things are so, it's so hard, right? And so while I know this decision, my recommendation is not one that's highly sought after, I know the sensitivity, it's an important component. It's one of many other components too. And so I need, I need to, with the administrators, weigh all of these kind of moving factors given our cohort by class moving through our system. And so, you know, I'm sensitive to, I understand.
So I'd say thanks for the, for the input from the community. I think you've got some more things to just keep considering as, as you're watching this. I think for the board, I'll speak for myself, I'd like to have, see this, the next time we meet you, to get an update on where we stand.
Can you post it on the kind of ongoing?
So we can monitor this and see if we, we're all in a good place or not as this moves forward.
Yep, thanks.
Thanks.
So the other, the other quick one, and I'll try to do this quickly, is the update on outstanding choice.
Yep.
I do have a letter that came to me from the superintendent from Chittenden South, essentially reciting what they believe is the agreement under the new provisions of school choice when money no longer followed the students. This was, this was contested, thank you, Mark, thank you, everybody. This was certainly contested by my, my colleagues around, around that. Obviously, South Burlington was the major recipient of individuals coming to us versus students, our students going out. In my follow-up with both superintendents from Burlington and from Chittenden South, Burlington has referred it to his finance committee. I have yet to hear back from him. I, I did speak to him today. He will be, I think, pretty responsive soon from that committee. The letter I received from Chittenden South superintendent was, again, cordial and appropriate, however, we're not interested in paying. We feel that, we feel that the, under Act one-twenty-nine, under Act one-twenty-nine, it was, it was absent and school choice no longer existed. We gave you a grace period essentially of giving you some dollars under that agreement, under some of the advocacy that was done through the previous secretary or commissioner, Armando. And so that's where we're currently at, not interested in paying. I have not yet followed up to the, to the letter, I'm letting you know that. In addition, because the letter was also copied to the superintendent in Essex, the Essex superintendent Judy DeNova has responded and said, we are also not interested in paying, however, we already paid you. So, you know, I'll have to.
What does that mean exactly?
The Essex superintendent?
You could tell. So, so currently, I think.
She should see if she can get it from Chittenden South.
So I think what I would like to recommend is that I'll, I'll connect with you, Patrick, a little bit as, as, as part of the response was, if we kind of had no, no energy, whether this means, you know, there obviously is going to be a response. But then you, you and I can talk about what might be the next response and inform the board of that.
Can you, are you able to give me a copy of that letter?
Yep.
Thanks.
Okay. So I can kind of say that's all I have, but that's not really all I have, right? And actually, I have copies for.
Everybody.
Yep. And one can go to John too.
There you are.
I feel like I'm really giving good information, you know, really fun stuff tonight.
I think he said he had copies for everyone.
Yeah, I gave, I have one for you too, John.
Did you have other things you wanted to discuss?
No, not at this time, I'm good.
Already getting. You give me the original, if you want to keep the original. All right. Any questions for David under superintendent report? All right. Let's see how we do here, moving along. Policy development.
So this is, this is a reading of our policies. One of the things that we're going to work on, we need to get into our work plan, is talking about policy revisions. Part of our work, my work with you, making sure our policy or policies are up to date. So this is actually one that is in need of updating. Because we're, we've made a decision and have Suzie on staff and she has graciously taken on the wellness kind of mantra. Wellness is followed, followed under her and she's worked with and we've made some revisions specific to that. So really, your pleasure. Suzie's here to answer any questions that you might have. You may be good with it and we can stop or, or she can highlight some of those changes. I don't know what you, what you wish.
So I know I had some questions that I sent back in, that I received responses to. I don't know if there's other people have questions that.
I'd love to know what your questions were and what the responses were.
Well, that's unfortunate.
I have a couple of questions myself, just little things.
You want to, you want to just walk through them? That would be fine and then Julie can add on and anybody else can add on.
Just for clarification, aren't we typically copied on responses to?
Yeah, I don't know why that, that didn't play out that way, but it may just be the summer.
We usually put them into board questions and that, that continues to be the practice. I don't know how, what, we actually had computers that were down for two days in our offices and we couldn't print, that, some of that was last night too, but that may have been part of it.
Go ahead, Suzie.
So Patrick's first question was, under goals for nutrition education, number two. And the question was, how do we determine qualified community partners? And the response was, qualified would be organizations already identified and approved by the superintendent's office and the South Burlington School District Wellness Committee, for example, Common Roots. Just stop me if.
Do they have to meet criteria with you?
Yes, it's a great question. I think for, for right now, we haven't discussed that, Julie. It's a great question and so the, because I haven't brought that before the Wellness Committee, the response is more one about organizations we're already working with. But it would, I think it's an important point that you make.
So we have state agencies that we work with, you know, and again, where there.
Department.
Yeah, and where there are others, then, you know, it's important that if there are, you know, funds or resources or security, you know, those things have to obviously, they have to, have to meet those qualified areas.
The next question was, in number three, the committee had chosen to take out the expression, "to the extent practicable." And the question was, why are you suggesting we change this to an absolute instead of one practical? And the response was, the South Burlington School District Wellness Committee identified nutrition, education and promotion as already occurring in our classrooms. And so the absolute was to ensure that this practice continued. Under goals for social and emotional health, number two was removed from the policy and the question was, why is this being proposed as being cut? And the response was, this particular section was moved to the procedures of the wellness policy since it was not required legally by the Vermont State School Board's model policies. And this was in an attempt to keep the actual policy as tightly constructed as possible. We did add, we would be happy to return it to the actual policy depending on the board's preference. And then under nutrition guidelines, number two, the question was, who is impacted by this change and how does this connect with five below? And the response was, an example might be if a not-for-profit sold pizza during the meal periods or vending machines, those from which the school district does not make money, were available during meal periods. And in regards to number two relating to number five below, fundraising efforts would be those that benefited the South Burlington School District in some way. And additionally, any fundraiser involving food during the school hours is now required to follow the USDA's Smart Snacks guidelines to be in compliance. And for number five, the question was, how does this work if we agreed to change in number one above? And the response was, we will still need to comply with the USDA's Smart Snacks since these guidelines are now required by the USDA for public schools to be in compliance. And then for number six, the question was, is this only food service? Ice cream parties, kids bringing in goodies for end of project year is now prohibited. And the response was, as part of a larger movement in the South Burlington School toward enhanced well-being, not just in nutrition, but also in physical health, mental health, social and emotional health, many in our school community are already considering and implementing alternatives to the more traditional celebrations that revolve around sweets. These efforts are intended to honor all in our school community while creating consistency within and between our five school buildings. The avoidance of using food as a reward or punishment is intended to, and this is a quote from the CDC, promote optimal childhood and adult health, growth and intellectual development. And this is back to our words now. Students, staff and families are asked to join in this larger district movement toward well-being by choosing snacks that honor the Smart Snacks guidelines for school parties and to consider creative alternative ideas for celebrations that don't necessarily revolve around food.
So I just want to make sure I really understand this.
Please.
So if a class is doing an end-of-year celebration, the food has to conform to these smart snacks? So how is, how does that actually play out in practice?
So what if, I would invite the board to, if you have a moment sometime this week, to go to the wellness website page. And we, the committee has contributed a lot of wonderful ideas, lists, because we want to make this as easy as possible for people. So there are lists of options that families can choose in place of maybe more traditional sweets. And additionally, we have, in the summer mailing going home, there'll be information for families and principals, like Mr. Trupilli, are sharing it with their staff members as well. well.
So the Smart Snack would be in place of, instead of saying, "Please bring a snack," mom's dad's guardians would be able to go and say, "I don't have time to make something. I could go to the store and get a Smart Snack that's similarly reasonably priced, or I could make off a recipe off of the Smart Snack something that complies with that." Being sensitive to the opportunity to do that as a mom, dad, guardian, really important. And similarly, if you don't have the time to be able to go and do the similar purchase. So you don't, again, what we've run into is, and I'm going to just exaggerate here, but, you know, eight plates of brownies, you know, for the celebration versus, you know, a snack that's going to, you know, be more meaningful and learning for our children. The nurses have been gracious. I mean, when we do things like this in snack areas, you can think about, you know, all the things we do in our cafeterias to be, you know, allergy considerate. When we have these events, we put ourselves in a place where there's higher risk when you do these celebrations. And so the Smart Snack process, as Suzie's outlining, it allows us to be much more considerate to all of our students, and that can be marked. Now, that said, I don't want it to be a snack that nobody wants to eat either, right? So those are the challenges, you know? We all know some of that.
The way that policy is worded, though, if you just take it at face value, it basically says, "Food, period, will not be used as a reward or punishment." That implies no food at parties or celebrations, whether it's carrot sticks or cupcakes. It basically says, "We're just not doing food parties anymore."
So maybe that needs to be reworded a little bit, right, to say that, you know, rewards are allowed under the, you know, probably not the right word, not rewards. We can work on that a little bit.
Celebrations are allowed as long as they conform to Smart Snack guidelines or something like that, or just a clarifying sentence, you know, you don't have to...
Celebrations versus rewards.
Is item six on this, us trying to conform to rules being enforced on us, or is this our choice?
They won't be used as rewards or punishments.
Yeah, that line.
Number, do you mind if I answer that? David, number six is, the wording is actually taken from research, extensive research done on the harms that can come from using food...
It's our choice to make this statement, not a food service or some USDA telling us to do this.
I would say both.
I'm sorry, Patrick. No, should I answer your question first? It is, again, part of the recommended policy from the Vermont State School Boards. It's in their recommended policy. So it's, I'm going to just, while we talk, I'll check on their wording and make sure.
But that's a recommendation.
But the point being is it's a recommendation, and I would say it's something we want to support.
Yes, it's exactly the same wording as is used in the Vermont School Boards Association Model Policy.
I have a couple of questions.
Please.
One question is, have you figured out a way to make a Smart Snack out of your mint brownies?
Oh.
I'm just curious.
I had that same question.
Green is kale now.
Yeah, is it now a kale?
A lot of discussion about that in the office. And actually, Martin, in all seriousness, Rhonda, our wonderful Rhonda Ketner, told me she would help me try to make them to follow the Smart Snacks guidelines.
Avocado or a candy bun or something.
Just go for the employed staff as well.
That's a great question. We've talked about that as well. I like to think of it as, Julie had a program with Matt McNeil years ago, and they named it Join In, and I just love the spirit of that. And I asked them both if I could borrow the name. I like to think of this as just a part of the larger healthy schools movement based on the vision already happening in our school district long before I was hired, and I'm just lucky enough to continue it. But, you know, that's heading towards well-being, and I think discussion around this will be incredibly rich and valuable. I'm expecting a lot of questions. And so I'm sorry, Martin, you had more?
No, I had, but this is a question comment. Can we have this policy tie in more to our ends that are relevant to this? So it's not just a matter of we're complying with this Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act, but it's also to advance our ability to achieve the ends. I don't have my list of ends right here, but I know there are some specifically that this would seem to apply to.
I have a couple of quick ones, too.
Yes, it's a wonderful idea.
Right ahead, my friend.
So, under goals for physical activity, number three, the district discourages restricting recess or other physical activity as punishment?
Yes.
So can we say that? I'm worried about us saying that. I don't know. It just seems...
I think it's legitimate.
It says discouraged.
Yeah, okay. That's fine. Well, then, number...
And this is the same vein of, you know, punishment, you don't, you can't have the snack. It's the same thing when we, in typical older punishments, it would be, you know, you just did something, and this certainly happens, you know, stop and, you know, do push-ups or something like that, right? That was, you know, then leaving somebody that I never want to do another push-up, because every time I ran into so-and-so, I had to do push-ups as a punishment. Leaves people with, you know, with a negative thing.
And I would just also add that actually, the educational quality standard says that students have to have a certain amount of, you know, physical activity that is not PE every day, so we really shouldn't be restricting that anyway.
Okay, and number four...
Before, I'm sorry, Julie, I don't mean to... Before we move on, I also had, I had a problem with the word punishment in the same sentence, because we shouldn't be punishing kids disciplinary method or, you know, means of controlling behavior or teaching kids. We're teaching kids. We're not punishing them because they did something wrong. If they did something wrong, we're teaching them how to do better. So I really didn't like that word in either of these places, and I know it came from other places.
As a consequence?
Yeah, a consequence or a disciplinary tactic or, you know, something that just doesn't imply that we're just punishing kids when they make a mistake.
Julie, that with the other spot, too.
Yeah, thank you, Chris.
I know, that's what I'm going to ask you.
Okay, so goals for other school-based activities, number four, that meal period thing, I don't think, based on my own experience, we can commit to that, Suzie, because I know, especially at the high school, kids often just do not get, first of all, some of them eat right before they come home from school. That's just a fact based on the schedule. And, you know, I just, I worry about the accuracy of that, I guess. And lastly...
Well, we do try to, I mean, I guess you'd have to define the word adequate. We've worked hard at the elementary levels to give, you know, and this is not easy, you know, 30 minutes of lunch period, and in some cases, that's...
Same here.
And that's hard, because sometimes kids will eat quickly, and it's, you know, it's not...
But like, see lunch at the high school is at 1:30 or something like that.
Yeah, so I, you know, we can certainly look into that.
You know, so I just like, I think we just need to look at it. And then finally, under nutrition guidelines, number three, it's just weird to me that it says between the hours of midnight.
We debated, in frankness, we debated whether that should maybe be in procedures, but it is, again, there's a lot of information for adherents to guidelines now established at the national level, and so that's one of those. But, again, I think this is only a first reading, and so maybe you all can help me, and I know David will help guide on how that works. Some of this can be moved to procedures, yes.
But does that mean that for those few hours between 04 and midnight, we can just serve Coca-Cola and Pringles?
Pop Rocks and Coke.
That's when the board gets to eat cookies.
But for example, like kind of basketball game, or, you know, with these other concession, like evening activities and things, that's what I thought this meant, was basically this evening period is a little more free-form than what's happening on school grounds during school hours.
I think that's a very fair interpretation of it. And additionally, we're moving even during those hours towards greater wellness, if that makes sense. So, but we're not there yet, and so that can't be part of the policy.
But I guess then I'm seeing a contradiction possibly here, because that, at the basketball game, at any of the sporting events, the stuff that's being sold is fundraising for the boosters. And in number five here, we have all fundraising efforts have to be Smart Snacks. So if we mean to let them sell what they want to sell...
But the boost.
Then that number five has to be modified to...
So the fundraising, again, if you can think of this as, there's what's required right now by the USDA, and then there's, as a district, where we want to be heading. So what's required by the USDA is that the fundraising applies to during the school day, during the school hours. So right now, after school, so for example, the boosters would be a great example of that, or even theatrical productions when they do their sales. That would not be out of compliance to have fundraising during those times.
Should it say all fundraising efforts during school hours?
It does.
Did I miss that somehow? I'm sorry.
Maybe not where, maybe, were we inconsistent in repeating it perhaps?
No, no, I just didn't read...
It's number five is the one.
Okay. No, that's fine then.
But we are trying, I mean, I think you make an excellent point, because we are trying to move in that direction universally. We just won't be there for this policy yet.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions on this first reading?
The quick one from my standpoint is on the staff wellness, that that would be expanded in terms of, I guess, either in the implementation or consideration in the metrics.
What that really entails.
What that entails, because we do a lot through district-wide, but then also through VHI, too.
I would say on that one as well, the staff wellness one, I have marked it up a bit to make it sound like the staff members are more in control. The way it's worded just sort of sounds like we're implementing activities that are going to ensure the well-being of our employees, whether they like it or not. And more language around, you know, sort of offer activities that provide staff members opportunities to improve and maintain their well-being, to sort of make it us offering the activities, them making the choice whether to participate or not. And then I also, I know we're jumping all over the place, but under goals for other school-based activities, that first paragraph, I know it seems to reflect some outside language. It just reads in such an awkward way to me.
Nutrition Acts, you mean?
Yes. Well, the first couple of sentences just don't quite, what I gather from after reading a couple of times is that basically we want school meals that are better than, at least as good or better than what the guidelines say they have to be. But it's just confusing in the way it's written. The district shall ensure that our guidelines are not less restrictive than guidance issued by the Secretary of Agriculture. That was just very confusing. It wasn't clear to me exactly what it meant. And I'm assuming what it means is that our food, you know, meets or exceeds the standards that are provided in these guidelines. But I just think it needs a little bit of a tweak in wording, and then that same wording is kind of used in policy implementation, number three. And so I just think that the wording could be clearer and then match in both places.
Any other feedback on the first reading? All right. I'm going to move us along. I gave everybody a copy of the draft communication guidelines that we have talked about once or twice. I don't expect, because I just handed it to you, they've had a chance to read it, but we've kind of gone around a couple of times on this one. We need to either make comments on it tonight, or finalize it, or make a commitment, I think, to do that in our next meeting.
Yeah, I don't think we should finalize it. There's something that I meant to distribute to everybody, but I'd like to do. I had a meeting more as a legislator regarding whether there are some changes to open meeting law to deal with social media, and also had this guideline with me at the time. But we ended up, Maida Townsend got from the Deputy Secretary of State memorandum regarding open meeting law, social media, and electronic communications that we should all take a look at, because it really raises some serious concerns on whether we should go this direction. And rather than trying to explain it right now at 9:30, I will distribute it so everybody can take a look at it and look at this policy in light of this document.
Okay. Can you forward? Or you want to just give me a copy and I'll scan it?
I'll just give you a copy, so I don't have to, yeah.
That's good. So I'll make, can I make a note right now that we add that to our, under item 14, we're going to set the agenda for our next meeting, that we make that notation now?
Can I have a copy of the one, and I'll scan the whole thing for you?
Sounds good. Update on negotiations. Update from our committee?
There's not too much update right now. We are working on another communication to try to urge a start as soon as possible in discussions with the SBEA. That hasn't gone out yet, but hope to do that in the next couple of weeks.
I think the other, kind of since we last met and had an update, the VHI board did select for the few districts that were supervisory unions that may not come to a settled contract prior to January of 2018, actually, it would be November, mid-November 2017, if there's not a settled contract. The default plan has changed to the gold CDHP plan, and that was a new development. Again, it's not anticipated that there would be many districts or SUs that couldn't come to agreement prior to that enrollment period, but that is the new default plan.
Very good. Any questions? All right. Thank you for that update. Executive limitations policy monitoring for action. Termination of parents and guardians. Treatment, but did I say termination?
No.
That's wrong.
And it went right over our heads.
Let me update that for the record. I wasn't trying to terminate any parent.
Thank you, Suzie.
Thank you, Suzie.
Thank you, Suzie.
Good night.
Thank you. So having missed the last meeting, has this been discussed in comments? And this is updated version, or this is our first reading?
We went through it, and David came back with some additional information.
Yeah, and so that, I think, is by your side.
Yeah, the surveys.
Yep. So you have some survey information, and also on page six of seven, there's by your side some information from Pietro, and weighing in on a comment that actually Martin had asked about the type of request. So those are the, maybe two additional artifacts.
Not maybe, those are the two artifacts.
And that's going to require a change, one change, and I'm wondering, therefore, if this is going to be coming back.
I'm not sure specifically what you see as a change, Martin.
In the detailed policy, number seven, evidence, the question, the issue was the language probable illegal activity, and that kind of left some question marks of what was it that, it's supposed to, I mean, the requirement is that it's investigating criminal conduct, and probable illegal activity wasn't necessarily really getting us there. So my question, and I went and reviewed the requests that have come in from the police to understand what they were, and I thought, well, the requests say what they're investigating, and, for instance, a theft in a vehicle, or an assault, or something like that. And my suggestion was, well, put what that is. What was the request for? I mean, it was a criminal investigation of an alleged assault, an alleged or a theft, et cetera. The question is whether that would cause any kind of problems with, in revealing that. And Pietro, as the email is that we saw, said there is not a problem. So my suggestion is that we actually put what those criminal investigations were.
Yeah, and from my perspective, I would, I would, I would, I feel like what I'm providing is adequate, is appropriate. I mean, it would allow you at any time to do a direct inspection, similar to what Martin did, to say that the cameras are being used, or when footage is being requested, that it's appropriately being requested. I'm simply saying probable. I'm not an investigator. I don't, you know, I'm following what I think is appropriate when those requests comes in. I do read those and obviously look at what the request is. But I don't really want to put myself out and say it's illegal activity. I'm not, I'm not...
No, but what's, no, but he's saying, like, in some cases here, you did this, right?
It was the consistency issue, that's all.
Right, but on these other ones, you know, can you do the same thing, is what he's saying? Can you write theft or whatever it is, just so that we understand?
Yeah, so, I mean, I can, I don't, I guess I could...
Yeah, so, I mean, I can, I don't, I guess I could go through what would be the potential illegal activities, and try to put them into a bucket, the right bucket, you know?
But it would be whatever, whatever his request says.
It's whatever they said, yeah.
I mean, it's whatever the, the...
Yeah, so let's take that a little further. You know, do I really want to be doing that, when maybe it might be something that would be specific to a student, student situation, you know, that could be sexual of nature?
But that's not going to tell us anything, I mean...
Right. And that was my question to Pietro.
But I want to be careful of that, where if it's one incident, and only one incident, and then it happens, then it's, does it open ourselves up to liabilities? I was simply trying to be more restrictive, I'm not trying to be hiding of that, so.
Well, David, I don't understand how you can call out vandalism and theft, and all, and then the other ones you chose to label as probable illegal activity.
Well, and let me, let me clarify, that was precisely my concern, and talking to Delina, and that's what we went to clarify with Pietro, was whether just...
And I don't know that he really clarified that. I think what he said is that you put it on.
Sounds like you need a follow-up question to that.
Am I going to have more categories, or can I?
Well, isn't, isn't the category what the police request is?
Right, but I want to be sensitive to not exposing the district to...
Sure.
...additional potential liabilities by giving, in a report, everything, I guess.
So I think, I think you need to talk to Pietro and give him the exact scenario.
I have, I have. I did talk to him about this, and I'm trying to be sensitive to the district and the liability of the district, if, am I exposing the district, you know, by identifying? That can be true.
So there may be, all right, I'll grant you that there, maybe there could be something sensitive, you know, actually though, I think a sexual assault that occurred, you know, I mean, if that was the one.
That would be, but what if they called it out as, you know, rape?
The challenge is, even if they, even if it's a sexual assault, if you've got a date of request, and you have that, and what could, what's publicly available, someone might connect some dots.
I'm not, I'm not trying to be difficult, I really...
No, no, I know, but my, my point would, that was one of the examples that I used, and it was like, well, no, yeah, that wouldn't be any, I don't see how that could be an issue. But having said that, I, having looked through these, none of them were of that nature. And so I would leave it to your judgment, if there is one that is sensitive, to then just say criminal investigation, or whatnot. My, my point is, I think that the ones that I saw and weren't listed on there...
I'm not trying to be difficult, I always think about, you know...
Yeah, so leave the discretion to you, but to the extent that you can give us more information, and if there's one that we really feel we need to go and inspect...
All right, let me, let's, let me come back at it, that's a little better, let me come back at it and just see where we're at, and given that, that may be something that I then include in my interpretation, if then there is some language around what I might, right, my discretion, that I will put it for actual requests, and use judgment for...
I mean, yeah, not, not to belabor the point, David, but you already used your judgment in some of these, when you, when you listed vandalism, suspicious vehicle, and theft.
Yep.
So I think what alerted the board is, why did you, why were four of the seven a vague definition? So I think we were looking for some judgment call, but when, on direct inspection, it doesn't look like any of the four that you chose to list...
Needed to be opted, or indicated differently.
Needed to be couched in a different way, yeah.
Fair.
So I don't know if we go through the rest of this, if this is going back?
Other questions?
I have, I have one on the attachment, the survey. I'm struggling with this being called an N survey, when it really isn't designed around seeking feedback specific to the ends. You can argue some of the questions might be embedded, but it's not really a comprehensive ends questionnaire, ends policy questionnaire.
I would say it's not comprehensive, for sure, it's a component of receiving feedback, specific to parent and student treatment, specific to the policies, the monitoring report.
And so, we started calling it that, you know, the first time we did it, and sort of, sort of came to the...
Well, I guess, I guess I would like it as, I like the idea of an ends survey.
Right. One of the pieces is, you know, trying to gather information that's longitudinal, so, you know, we could come up with a new survey that might be more specific now that we know more about the ends and are using less. When we first did the survey, which has been revised a little bit, you know, we were, we were also using more proxies to try to determine the ends, also as the original ends policy, and not the one, you know, as modified. So next year, we could certainly look to some questions that might specifically address some of what's missing in terms of an ends kind of pieces. Though I do think that a number of these, you know, do obviously speak to some of the things that we want to see, from a parent survey, remember.
Well, and also, I mean, by virtue of, if it were to become a true and comprehensive ends policy survey, it would also serve as a community educational tool by calling out the ends.
I guess my question was, how is the information used or acted upon from the survey?
So we have pivot tables that, that you don't have here, that, you know, go to the schools in question, in which they can look at different demographic groups within the, the survey, and then the schools use it to work on their own pieces related to this, through professional development, through staff meetings, through, through the various things. What I haven't done yet is really look, though you have the data from the, you know, the two years ago and the new survey, we haven't done comparative work yet to see where we've grown or not grown, or, or grown, or grown down, you know, and whether statistically, you know, how much. So we haven't done that yet. But that's how we've used this survey in the past, is pretty much at the school and then, you know, general.
And I don't know, you know, the best conference that we had, you know, our elementary schools that went, that's certainly relevant information that comes back for, for our schools to understand how the learning environment is in, in those schools. And so when we look at positive behavior supports, you know, systems for students, this is important information. Again, I was there for a day and was quite happy with a lot of our staff working on really important things around student, you know, responsiveness and welcomeness to the community. So I think this is important. And from my perspective, and right, maybe not called ends, we can change that name, but important that we get that feedback, or whatever feedback we can from parents and guardians.
Yeah, I would just say, it just sort of felt like it was neither here nor there, it didn't feel like a true end survey, it didn't really feel like it was addressing all of the concerns that a parent might have, you know, in terms of parent satisfaction. It was, it just was unclear to me, like, what the thought process was behind designing it, and whether, so for example, if, if I were to do, if I were to get a survey, I would want to be asked about, you know, teachers and curriculum, and, you know, things that I think could be done better outside of just these very specific, you know, characteristics that you're sort of calling out. And that's just thinking as a, as a parent, but...
And it was specifically directed more towards, you know, treatment, right, looking at how, how our students and parents are feeling, and so, although we shouldn't miss the mark when we send out a survey, it should be more comprehensive, so I think, to your point, it would be...
The other piece that you don't have here, because sometimes it calls out people specifically and individually, both positively and negatively, there's a ton of comments, probably close to, as many people as answered the survey triple it by comments, and those comments go to the schools, so that they could be dealt with. But like I said, some of that is actually personal identifying, both to positive and negative to teachers, administrators, and staff, that information is not here, obviously.
I just also, the design of the survey also just seemed to be, I don't have the survey in front of me, but just given how the data's aggregated, it seems like basically these are a lot of sort of yes, no questions. So do you think the school is, you know, working on this, or not, as opposed to sort of a spectrum of how well we think the schools are doing? And sometimes that information is just, it's a little easier to feel like you're getting your point across when you're filling out a survey, if you have a little bit more range, as opposed to a black and white question. So I guess basically, to step back, I'm just sort of feeling like there are things that we could do to improve the survey, and how it's used.
Well, I guess I'd go a step further and say that, I mean, now that, the reason why I requested seeing the survey as part of the evidence for this was to see whether there was compliance, and I don't think that this survey fulfills what your interpretation of this particular detailed policy is. I, I think that there isn't compliance, because it really is not getting that, the information required, you know, related to the district ends. And, and at least my suggestion, I'd like, obviously the rest of the board has to weigh in, on whether, if that is the case, then you would need to add for our next look at this, a plan for getting into compliance and having that in here. But that's just me, one of five who doesn't think this is in compliance. Before you do that, I think we probably need to understand from everybody else where they are with that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I absolutely understand that I can improve opportunities for more, more open and ongoing communication currently than what we have, and what I've put in here, but I feel like it's certainly adequate in, in providing the opportunities for, for parents and guardians to respond. So, obviously you have, you, you as a board have the right, under policy governance, to say, I'm not meeting it, and I need to come up with a, with a, with a plan to comply. But, so again, and that, and that said, I certainly take a lot of the feedback currently that, about the survey, or the opportunities for further clarity, you know, I know.
Does the board want more time to consider Martin's question?
Yeah, we can come back to this next, next time, so everybody's maybe a little clearer in their mind.
Okay. I mean, what I would, I mean, I guess I can look at it, but it sounds like maybe it'd be just more of an opportunity for, for board members to digest it, and then give me more specific feedback, unless you want me to go back and...
Maybe good if we can get board members to comment on that directly to David, between now and the next meeting, just to, if, if there's any consistency in that feedback, he has an opportunity to present something at the next meeting, as opposed to hear the reaction at the next meeting, and then bring it around again.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Thanks.
The next one, emergency superintendent succession.
Right. So this is again, 2.6 of our monitoring report. Again, partly required that I do it on an ongoing basis, but certainly when known changes are currently in play. We've had some transitions currently with, we should have welcomed John Obbin to an actual school board meeting, not a working session, but John, welcome, and RETN, John Obbin, our new business manager, is present with us tonight. But with those transitions and changes comes the evaluation by me to look at, in the event that I'm unable to be in the capacity of superintendent, who would be in that. As outlined in here, obviously administrators in the district are certainly able to fulfill and support district duties, but currently I am changing the two executives that would be named as emergency successors, from Patrick Burke to Patrick Phillips, and from John Stewart to Joanne Godak, as successors in the event that I'm not here.
Could you say another word about why those two specifically?
Yep, so John Stewart's retired, as you know, and we've celebrated here at the school board meeting, and Patrick Burke is currently on, on, on leave as a result of health-related matter, and given his perhaps unavailability for the time being, it's important that I have somebody who's here. So those are the, those are the reasons.
But my, my question was not, why are we replacing those two, it's why the two people you chose, are the two people that you chose? Why, why Pat Phillips and Joanne?
Two individuals that I feel, number one, we have capacity in the, in the, in the high school because of the administrative structure that's currently there, the longevity of the administrator in Pat Phillips, who's been here for a while, and Joanne Godak, also within her realm of responsibility, she also has the opportunity to also be backfilled within central office or other central office supports, and/or backfilled through somebody else within her department. So obviously both are long-term employees that have been here, understand the duties and responsibilities, and feel that they're the, they're the right successors at the present time.
So one thing, David, it indicates on here is that these two identified executives regularly participated in and contributed to these functions, and have functioned in my place during my absences over the past year.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's not accurate. I haven't been absent in, in the year, so they haven't still been for me. They haven't, I mean, I obviously have been absent, but in that period of absence, it was John or Patrick that stepped up, so that's inaccurate, so that should be changed. But as far as capacities and duties, I would say that they're, they're doing similar type duties in their current capacities, have been similar duties in regards to public education and responding to the needs similarly, I would say.
We talked about this a little bit before, Elizabeth brought this up, but what about the fact that, you know, there's not a financial person within those two?
Yep. Well, again, we still have structure with the business manager, our district has that structure, we have, you know, those structures aren't going away, and in this case, John remains an important resource. John certainly is onboarding, I think, in John's past...
I don't know anything yet. I'm still here, sure, maybe you'd think about it, but not today.
But John actually...
I would certainly support either of these two, if this sort of thing were to happen.
But John, in his capacity in the past, actually, where he was in the Dresden District, was, was actually assistant superintendent, has business manager, and was a successor to the superintendent.
I did this lots of times, in my prior career.
And, and, you know, we have other experienced administrators who can certainly make some decisions around, you know, important decisions, yeah.
How long has Joanne been with the district, just to remind me?
I think she's coming on 20 years. 20 years, and she's been in the position, I want to say 10 or 11, is that right, Meg? 10 or 11 years, probably, in the director position?
In the director position, I think it's more like eight.
Eight or nine, yeah.
And before that, she was the CES when Joanne Godak had both jobs together.
Yeah.
So I have one other question. So does this mean, number four, that if either Pat or Joanne were the emergency, were in place, that the board has, that's a 60-day thing?
Right.
And then the board has what right to change that?
Well, you need to be, you need to be working towards some sort of a more permanent, 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 you know, outcome.
If leadership is in place, at least every 60 days, the board has to either reconfirm that, or have it put another plan in place.
Basically, that just means that, you know, you say, well, this is great, we can just hold. There needs to be a more official naming, you know, and decision for who's, who's actually going to be in that position.
Yeah.
And I, and I, you know, two people are named, obviously, because in, in some cases, there may be an absence or unavailability. Obviously, I would say that at the building level, the busiest, I think the primary would be likely Joanne Godak, with a backup of, of Patrick Phillips, kind of backfilling and supporting along with the other central office folks supporting, supporting that, supporting him or her.
So, this is not, not covered, I don't think, in, in the paragraph at the beginning of 2.6, but so it's just a general question. If that were to happen, is this a board action to name one of them in your absence?
No, I, by virtue of, of the policy and the succession, then they're, they're so named.
So they're both named?
They would be both named as successors.
It's not a choice, that we name one and the others help in?
It's part of the succession that you don't, you don't do one, you, again, common practice has been, at least in the monitoring policy governance process that you've been...
It's a trigger until 60 days pass, and then we have a choice.
Yeah. I mean, basically, you don't want to put the burden on one individual within the district, it's a shared, it's essentially a shared leadership process that allows for the ability for the district to continue in, in, in an appropriate fashion.
So they're both of serving essentially as assistants, it's not like, okay?
Co-superintendents, or something like that.
Okay.
Co-sups.
So we had one suggestion of a change, just a material change, that's the only suggestion I think we had, so that'll come back, this'll come back to us.
Mm-hmm.
We have dropped item 13 for this period, so now we're on setting the agenda for the August what meeting?
Seventeenth, right?
Well, the third, we do have the third, but it was going to be a short conference call, as I had in my notes, it was going to be just for new hires, so...
So we don't need to do an agenda for that?
But there's a second thing for the third that I noticed from... But there's a second thing for the third that I noticed from the lease or something. There's, there's something else needs to be approved by the third. So, it's not just the new hires, it's a lease or something. Well, John is not.
At tonight's meeting, I hope you'll approve the choice of the leasing company. And the way this is set up, I guess, I thought it would happen on the same night, but the actual approval of the lease document was intended for the August 3rd meeting. I don't know if you could do that. I think you could probably do that on a quickie phone meeting, if you wanted to. I think you could wait till the 17th or 23rd, whatever the other two meetings are. But, I think the next time around, I'd ask you to do that all in one meeting, but I guess that's not the way it was set up here.
So, we have to hear from Bob Fletcher on that?
Yeah, I think we could have done that, like, you know, at the same time.
Right.
But this time, it didn't happen.
Right.
But yes, if you would entertain that approval on the August 3rd phone meeting, that'd be fine. I think it could.
Is your question, do we need to have Bob Fletcher on that phone call? Is that what you're saying?
Legal opinion.
Or, or if there, if there are going to be questions on the legal opinion.
Okay.
Which seems unlikely, because we've seen these before.
So, that means the August 3rd meeting is largely that item and consent agenda. Is that correct?
That's what I'm, I mean, I think.
And then probably setting the agenda for the 17th.
I'm wondering, we can do that right now. Yeah. Since we were so efficient on that first one.
So, I guess the question, would we be getting the Fletcher or whatever documentation we need, obviously, in advance of the August 3rd meeting?
We could easily do that, I think.
Yeah, so we can determine if we have any questions for Bob, then.
For the phone, for the phone meeting.
If there was any hesitation on Bob's part, we would have put this off to the 17th or 23rd, but I can't, I'd be very surprised if there was any hesitation there.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. So, the August 3rd agenda is set, August 17th.
For those items.
For those two, for the August 17th agenda.
You wanted a slide in communication guidelines, right?
Yes. Do we have an anticipation of the three items that are under our agenda item one, that we need all three of those for the August 17th? I think we don't, I would question the need for a number, for a letter B under agenda item one.
Well, unless there's been, if there's additional financial information that would be disadvantageous to do in public, I mean, I don't know. Well, we did say that we were going to actually make reports to the public on the 23rd. And so, that would kind of be our last meeting as a group before we really had to polish those up and have them ready to go. So, we had said we would distribute the reports by the 9th. This would probably be, the 17th would be like our last chance to have any comments that we didn't want the public.
Right. So, we'll, so, right. If there's, if there's things that we have to keep private for some reason.
Well, like the financial information, for example, if there are things in the financial report that we don't.
So, we'll leave it on there as a warned item if we need, and if we need it, we'll take it. Fair enough.
Yep.
Any other changes to the draft that's stated?
So, we're going to bring back, we've got the.
We got those two bringing back.
It's coming back.
We got the evaluation on there, so that's good. We get the, we're adding communications, it sounds like that's it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We have an agenda for the 17th.
And we'll work on, on the 17th, we'll do the 23rd, or is that going to be in close order that we should do?
The only, the only other question I have on the 17th, I was just looking at materials from earlier in the meeting, was do we want any kind of just very brief update on where we are in students and enrollment? Yeah.
I could put that under my report, if that's all right. I might move that up, though, because at 8:15.
Yeah.
No, actually, it's their superintendent's report.
Yeah, it's under 7:15.
Sorry. I was reading 11. Yep.
Okay. As far as the 23rd, I'd prefer to just wait and schedule on the 17th unless anybody wants to push back on it. All right. Future agenda items, anything to discuss under future agenda items? Hearing none. The minutes of the June 15th meeting, any comments or observations or needed changes? Hearing none, those are approved. These are the lease notes for equipment. I'm speaking to that, you or John?
I'll just say that Jon Stewart put this together and he put it out the bid, our lease consultant put it out the bid for respondents. The lowest bid rate is 2.63 percent. And any of these are equally capable of handling this lease and doing our arrangements here. So, I would encourage the board to approve this going forward.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
The only question I had was on the actual document that kind of went with it. So, there was this document that had dates and things. The dates seemed off to me, like they were from an old document or something, because it said June 20th, 2015 to July 20, 2015, in terms of the quotes are fixed. So, it seemed like there were some mistakes in dates.
They will fix the.
Okay. And they'll fix those kind of things.
These are all anticipated dates, depending on when we could get this to the board and what we don't, and all that. But, all of those will move with the.
Assigning.
Okay. That's fine, then.
All need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
And now, we have the consent agenda. Anything you'd like to highlight for us on the consent agenda?
There's a lot of activity in here. And there is a new hire report, and you also have a bid on here as well. So, again, part of this is trying to be sensitive to the, to the startup of the school and the replacement of some of our positions that are resulting in retirement. I'm giving you the update on where we are on budgeted versus actual. And I do owe you the FTE counts, which will be an ongoing kind of track, as I said earlier. So, again, these are positions that are.
Any questions on the new hires or the bid?
I had a question, David, on the hires, either within the hires or within the interview or interview and recruiting process, have there, has there been progress made on diversity goals?
There, I would say we're making progress. I'm still not necessarily completely, you know, happy with, you know, with the outcome. So, as we look at, as we look at the pool, I think there's, you know, the committees are charged more with looking at that than ever before. I still feel like we have work to do, and this is as we continue to onboard our practices of diversity, equity, and inclusion in the work that we're doing as a district. So, I think we're making progress, Elizabeth. I'm still not necessarily happy with, I'm not at every committee appointment process or every committee hire, every hiring committee, but we have given out specific guidelines to be working on that more and more. I do know that we, and we've had a conversation at our admin tree to putting, putting some additional attention and focus around our recruitment, you know, recruitment, you know, search pool, if you will, so.
Any questions on the bid?
Well, that does remind me of another item.
On the front loader?
Uh, no. I was going to back up to number 15.
No.
Future agenda items. We, it just sparked, the diversity question sparked my memory that, that we, I believe, from last fall, we are still owed an explanation of what the status is with respect to the rebel name and what the administration was going to do in response to that issue. And I'd like to have that down on the future agenda items to get that on.
Let's go down, have that on my, my long-term, my long-term list as well to make sure we get back to it.
Yeah, we may have to look back at the RETN of what that was that we asked for, you know, but.
No, I actually, I've got a copy because I did my little stack of follow-up items, so that's good.
All right, thank you. Sorry to have backed up.
That's all right. We'll pull you forward again. All right. Consent, consent agenda is approved. Questions on accounts, payables, orders?
Yes. I have a question about why we are paying Frank Locker more money right now. I haven't seen any work product. I don't know if this is related to some other business in the district, but I haven't seen any work product on master planning and visioning from him. And I would like to, if I'm going to see him more.
So, you can get some more detail, you know, from Frank, right up until, you know, he continues to do pieces and parts. You know, again, you heard Stephanie speak specifically to some of the information that came from, from Frank or was requested of Frank, so.
But the things that she requested, I'm sorry, I interrupted you. The things that she requested were things that had already been put into the model months and months ago, and.
So, was that for, was that payable for his presentation to us?
I don't know.
So, there was some, there was a piece of back pay that was listed there that was when he did the presentation.
Okay.
That said, I think it's important that we do have the detail, and we have had the detail, and I don't, I don't want to put this, John, on the spot. We have been very diligent about our detail because we did this in partnership with the city. City paid for a good chunk of this, and so, you're absolutely right, when the report was done, that was there. If it's a clarification of the report and we call him back to something, again, this is similar to what we have to be mindful of with, with White Burke, you know, because those all trigger, you know, kind of cost, costs, you know, increases. But, we'll get you that, we'll get you that detail. I'm pretty clear that it was for May. I think that the clarity around other calls that have been made as of recent around other requests, whether they're embedded in the report or just new requests, I'm not sure where that will fall, and whether he'll call, he'll call that out. That may then, you know, that always results in us clarifying the intent of the request, was that part of the report?
Right.
You know, and we pay for the call, not the work, you know, there's a series of things that we have to go through around doing that.
Okay.
So, we, we, I did get that request, Bridgette, and I'm working with John and some of his staff on that.
I don't want them to talk too much about it tonight. I'm not comfortable with it yet.
Okay.
Okay. Accounts payable order, so the accounts payable orders are under the consent agenda, basically. So, unless there's an objection, those will be approved.
Oh, there's action required on these?
Oh, number 20 there is, yeah.
Oh, number 20.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just trying to finish up 19, make sure we didn't have an objection to moving those forward based on any questions. So, number 20. Now, we need, any questions, any dialogue you want to share with us on this?
I'll move that we, I'm sorry.
These are just included in the capital projects that we've approved and contracts we've approved and just progress paid and stored this work.
Because they're over 50, I mean, I, I think we're just trying to stay to the, to the policy.
I will move that we approve the accounts payable order checks to Titan Roofing and Nagley and Chase Construction Company.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Take a motion for adjournment.
Going into executive session.
Take a motion to go back into executive session?
Someone.
I tried. Any opposed?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.